To order, March 27th, roll call.
Ms. Snell.
Here.
Ms. Metoyer.
Here.
Ms. Flohr.
Here.
Mr. Davenport.
Here.
Ms. Franco.
Here.
Ms. Black. Ms. Yelsey.
Yeah.
Dr. Navarro.
Here.
Okay. Do we have any public comments? Okay. First, I want to thank Sherri and Veronica for putting together all this information, which I know you've all read. It's really, I mean, it stops us from having to reinvent the wheel, so that's really great. We also think alike in discussion guides. She prepared a discussion guide for me. I would like to put this in three different areas. Because we have a limited amount of time and I want to make sure we get some decisions made tonight, I wanted to start with talking just about the structure. The structure being, do we want one board member, one student board member who reports for all the schools and does, we could decide exactly what the person does, but essentially sits on the dais, has a provisional vote, maybe reports for all the schools, and can participate in trainings. And then, we could also go with one student board member and other student reps that just come and just stay for a limited amount of time, like they do now, give their report and leave, and the student board member stays for the entire meeting. Or, we could, I also heard mentioned, rotate out the, each school board member to serve as a...
Oh, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to follow you. You said you want to talk about, you want to structure it in three different forms. Are you still on the first form?
I'm still on the first form.
Okay.
The first form is, the first form's structure. How do we want, how, it doesn't, this isn't about the application or the selection process.
Right, destruction.
It's just the structure. How do we want to structure this? And I was going through, like, one board member, one student board member, and no student reps. A student board member and a student, and student reps. Just rotating the student, the students who fill, fill the, who are now called student board members, rotating them around, or leaving it the way we have it.
Or whatever other ones that we come up with.
Or whatever you come up with. That's what I want to talk about first. Then, when we get the structure, we can move on to all these, this wonderful discussion guide that Sherri prepared and get into the details. Actually, before we do that, I, after we talk about the structure, I wanted to talk about the timeline, because maybe this first time, we have to simplify the process, because we don't have a lot of time. So, after we, and the timeline, I don't think will take us long. And then, we can talk about, she's prepared this great guide, what we want to include, what we don't. How's that sound?
Well, I think that, I don't disagree, but I think that the very first question that has to be discussed is whether we believe that we need, we need student, student board members. As, as we read through this and we saw some of them, some of them don't have it at all. So, I, you know, well, I don't disagree. I agree with the structure, but I think that we either, we have to decide whether we, we believe that an important component of representation is that we believe that there, we should have one or more student, we should have student board reps.
And that's, that, to me, that's structure.
And are we okay with our structure being open and not button pushing? I just want to know where we are.
We are okay.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I mean, are you okay?
Process, our process.
I'm okay with every, as long as you don't interrupt people and, and... And everybody gets a chance to speak.
I would like to know, yeah, I would just like to know if Mrs. Black or Dr. Navarro has talked with your advisory committee and what their opinion would be. I'd like to know, what are the, what are our students' opinion on this? And what, if any, the high school principals have an opinion on this? So, I'd like that information first.
I was out at the last student board, it's student advisory meeting, but I think Mrs. Black was in attendance.
We were there, but we, we spent most of the time talking about our safety and, you know, facilities. And Dr. DiAgostino, he, he pretty much talked about where we were at, what staff was doing, you know, and we heard from their advisors, you know, they had a lot of feedback from them as well. Not so much with the, with the students as we, as it was with the advisors, you know. Lot of concern out there. But, as a board member, who has met with, you know, quite a few over my 20 years with students and whatnot, it's, it's kind of a hit and miss every...
Every year.
Every year. So, you'll have someone, and thank you, Van, for being here.
Very student.
You will have a student who is very passionate about being part of the process. And, and we welcome those, and we give them an opportunity. The other students allow them, you know, to take the lead if they choose to, so it's kind of like self-regulated. But, overall, you know, the majority of our times, and I went back and looked, you know, at the majority, you know, we, we don't have any one student that isn't already buried in a lot of, you know, of their own, and trying to keep up and read the Friday reports and do all of that kind of stuff. I just, I have a little concern about that, whether they're, you know, earnestly going to, you know, be involved.
Well, and our timing of trying not to add more stress onto our students might be...
Well, and not only that, staff, you know, once, you know, staff has to ensure, I'd be curious of Sherri's, because I think Sherri's been in the trenches, not to put you on the spot, Sherri, but I think she's been in the trenches working with our students over the years, you know, in both, you know, probably as long as I've been dealing with them. So, so I think it just, you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned about coming up with some, you know, hard and fast rules, or a policy, or something like that, where I think maybe we could say something in the beginning, you know, of the school year, "This is your opportunity, and if anybody feels strongly about it," you know, kind of like Van did, you know. And we have had pretty amazing students step up and take that role. But, I think it's a lot of business.
So, are you saying it's more would be informal, do it as we do it? And if there's somebody that year that, which I would agree, I mean, I just want to make sure.
I just, I just think that it's so inconsistent, and, and every student, you know, some students, you know, we've had that didn't even show up at the first and the last, you know. And they never showed up to the meeting, and that, I know that frosts Mrs. Flohr and all of us equally, but, you know, we've, we've impressed upon that, and we've seen a better, you know, turnout. And, but that's because we took more of a role with them. But, you know, when you start having, you're going to have to, in order for students to really be, have a provisional vote and be able to, you know, weigh in, they're going to have to be educated into what we're talking about. They're going to need the background and whatnot. Not to say that they can't, or, you know, maybe somebody really, or won't. Yeah, we're, you know, they're, you know, we're pretty excited about it. So, anyway, so I'm all over the place, and I was looking here.
Yeah. You know, from, and I guess I'll, I'm going to just jump in from my, from my point of view. One is, I think the expectations have changed and the roles have changed and the responsibilities. I can tell you that in, in, in the beginning, when we had our student board reps, they were not the leadership. They ran for the office at each of the schools. It was a separate position on ASB. So, it was not the president, it was not the vice president, it was not the, the executive committee. It was a, they ran for it on the board. And so, and so there was, there was campaigning involved, and then eventually, then it moved to appointment, the ASB. So, the first they ran, so for several years, they ran. And when they ran, they showed up. They were here, because it was their ASB, it was their ASB position. And on top of that, they were getting, they were getting a leadership grade. Now, I don't know, Kurt, do they still get a leader, do they still get a leadership grade?
I, I believe all of our student reps are in ASB. I know at some of the schools, they do run for those positions still. At a, at a few of the other schools, they're appointed positions. So, there are times when kids run for office and they don't make it. And then, a lot of times, if the ASB directors feel that they would be good candidates, then they appoint them to certain positions.
Are they, are they appointed by the ASB or by the principal?
Advisor.
By the advisor?
By the advisor.
At, at most of the schools, I believe so, yes. Some of them, they run and they're elected by the student body, and at others, they're appointed.
Do they get, do they get a leadership grade?
Yeah, it's, it's a class that they're in, it's ASB leadership.
But it's under ASB.
So, let me continue. So, then it, then it sort of morphed into, all of a sudden, we were having ASB presidents. And I think that's what we have now, is it's morphed into ASB presidents who have multiple commitments in terms of what they're doing. And I don't know whether that's because they decided that they want to do this, or whether they believe that that was one of their job responsibilities, as being on ASB, is that they're supposed to be the board rep. So, so that's, that's where I'm coming from. And I think that, from that standpoint, it's sort of, you know, we used to rail about, well, it was a popular, you know, if they were voted on, there was a popularity contest. And then, it was, look, because it looks really good on their resume. They can write that they were a student board rep.
And we would send letters.
They're eligible to, to, to go to CSBA to do, to do that. They're eligible to actually run for the student board rep on the State Board of Education. They, that's, that's, that's a position. Or, they were appointed, I had one individual that was on our board that I was able to appoint to the Ledge Committee, who, who went up to the Ledge Committee. So, I, so I'm in a quandary on, on, on that position. So, I think that we have to be real clear that if we're doing it, I mean, I think all of us agree that we've had some really top-notch, fabulous individuals, and we've had some really hard ones. And the question is, is, I will, I will state my case. I don't believe, I believe that, that the structure, I like how we have representation from all the schools. I like that opportunity of providing individuals, you know, students, with the opportunity for leadership and see how government, governance works. I do, I do like having representatives from all, all, all the meetings. Whether, whether that means that one individual, I just, I like that structure. I like having, versus having one individual who is the only person. What I don't like is how the process of getting there. You know, that's, that's what I'm having a hard time, is the process of getting there, because there doesn't seem to be a lot of accountability. If they're getting a grade from ASB on their transcript that says they were in ASB leadership, then their advisor, does, does the advisor contact you, Sherri? Do you have any communication with the advisor whatsoever?
Veronica, before each board meeting, emails the advisors and the student board members, or the advisors, I believe it is, just to remind them. We do get feedback from the advisors if a student cannot come, if they're in an AP test mode, or if they're, you know, they have another commitment. But, most of the time, the communication is between the advisor and Veronica.
And it's mainly on, on logistics rather than content and... See, my thing right now... But, does the advisor, let me ask you this one. Do they follow through on that? Does the, do you contact the advisor afterwards and say, "This individual did not show"?
That is correct.
So, they actually take, so is that to assume that they take role?
I know, in real time, I text the principals and let them know if their student board rep is not here. Whether that affects their grade or not, I don't know, I've never checked, but usually...
See, and that's, that's where I'm having, so that's, that's my, that's my whole issue. I like the way we have it, I just don't like, so I like the structure, I just don't like... The devil's in the details. I don't like how they're, how they get here. I don't, I don't like how the, how the process.
You might like it at some schools, and you might not like it at others.
I'm not, I don't have confidence in...
I think it's not a matter of liking, I think it's a more of confident. I don't have confidence in the process of selecting the individual, that there's much, you know, you're not putting it out there.
There's a big difference, if you, in, I'm putting, I'm going back, way back, to myself when I was in high school. And my commitment to come to the school board to give a report, as our parent rep does from PTA, is a way different commitment than it would be to sit on the dais through the entire meeting, no matter how long it is, and listen to all the details, and be available for us to ask for a student input. That's the one piece that I would like. Even if what our student reps did was, we had an assigned thing where we got together with them, a rotation, that if you're on the dais, you're here for the whole meeting.
Yep.
Because there are times when we have had a meeting and said, gee, it's too bad the kids left, I'd love to find out what they think, and they've gone already. So, there's, there's that piece. And as a volunteer at my school, or making it desirable, I, I don't know, if I had four AP classes and I also was on the girls' water polo team and playing soccer, I don't know if I'd want to commit to being here every two, other Tuesday till eight o'clock at night.
When you, when you, I'm sorry.
And I was that overachieving kind of person.
Right. So, when you, but the thing, it's unfair for us to ask them to weigh in if they don't have all the information.
Exactly. So, then I'd have to get this, and then it's even more. Sure, it's like taking a whole other class.
It could be pre-scheduled, just like we do for agenda prep, for instance, at the beginning of the year. You have the board members, and they know on March...
This is your meeting.
This is, this is your meeting, you have to be at the entire time. It's a commitment that they know far in advance.
And please read the agenda ahead of time.
Which makes sense, which is where I was at.
And, and if they, and we have, it seems like we have one and an alternate, or two from each school anyhow, so between the two of them, one should be available, the other one has some kind of issue. But, if they know far enough in advance, or they could switch with somebody that they know, I'm, you know, I'm on a college visit then, or whatever.
What do you, what do you think?
Judy, Judy wants to say something.
What I was going to say was that I like the concept of a, of a board representative from each site. The culture at each of our high schools is somewhat different. The issues at each of our high schools are, while they're similar, they're still somewhat different in terms of the emphasis or the need for a different structure. I think we need to look at, we set the structure. We say we want this person appointed, or elected, or however we would like to see it happen. I do believe that sometimes we have board meetings that go until 10:00 or 10:30, and I think there, was it Saddleback that has it, where they have to stay until at least nine o'clock? And then, they are excused if they choose to be, because that, we have that with lights...
I bet that is reasonable.
On the fields.
Right.
So, it would seem to me that that makes more sense. That's where I am. I just like, I like to hear what's happening at the different sites. I may know what's happening at Harbor, because I go to the PTA meetings there. But, I don't know necessarily all that's going on at Estancia. And this is my opportunity to pick up on all of that information.
And even if the other reps give a report to one person, they don't really know either, other than what they're reading, it's not...
I like having all the schools.
Well, I would just, I, I would like to see, whatever we do, the position mean more. It feels to me like we encourage them to leave early. We don't really give them any information about what's going on at the meeting. They just sit there, and then they give the report, and they leave as soon as they can. And it's, it's not the experience that I think we should be giving a student board member or student board members. I also think, it shouldn't necessarily come from ASB. There's youth in government in every, every school.
No.
What school doesn't have youth in government?
Harbor doesn't have a youth in government class, nor does Mesa.
Okay, well, they have a government.
The only two that do are Estancia and CDM.
They have a government, but they have government classes. I mean, there are kids that are interested in the govern, governing process.
An election process, they would, it would come from that.
And, so, I guess I was looking that we would have somebody that would actually get involved, actually learn something from this experience, rather than just come and give a report. Sure, it's nice to see all of them give, but it's just, it's kind of virtually the same report, you know. We're, we're having our prom, it's here, we're having, and that's all good stuff, but that's not, I don't think that's deep enough, especially with what's been going on with our youth. I mean, they're just really stepping up and getting involved. And so, I'd like somehow to come up with something that would make it a more meaningful experience.
And I agree, I agree, I think some of it is, is our own doing, is because they, they get, the only way they can get access currently, right now, is that they can go on to the public. They don't have what's called, I mean, I'm looking and thinking, well, why can't we just have a student board member at NMUSD? You know, like, so they have access to agenda online, you know, they have an agenda online. And they can, they, they can't download the confidential information, but certainly, they can go, you know, and they have one password, everybody has...
But, all the attachments are on the public ones, so it's not, other than being, the agenda online gives us, gives us the opportunity to put notes online if we want to, and things like that. However, I don't utilize that piece. As, as, I take notes, I print things out and write things down. So, my saying is, you can be a very active participant without having to have access to the, an email agenda online. What comes out on Friday to the public, you can, but still, if we had somebody that was, we really wanted to, there would be a level of expectation that that would be read, and if there's something, for example, this agenda said that we were discussing at a board study session at 3:30, and I would think that people that would have been interested might have read that and come.
Well, and that...
Exactly.
And I think that that's, that's part of it. And I guess, you know, so we, you know, we have these expectations that they'll be up to speed, but they don't have, they don't have what, what we would call, is, we have agenda prep. So, three board members have the opportunity to be front-loaded on what's on the agenda. We have the opportunity to get the, get the agenda sent to us, say, "It's online now, on Friday, read it." So, unless you, unless you tell them, hey, boy, you know...
Homework over the weekend.
Over the weekend, here's your, you know, here's the agenda. They don't necessarily put that into the responsibilities of saying, you need to review the agenda.
Because that's not their responsibility now.
I don't know if they get a list of responsibilities. I think it's become kind of an easy way to get something on here.
We have told them at the very beginning what their responsibilities are, but that has not been one of them. We haven't gone into that depth to say, it's your responsibility to read the agenda, know what's going on.
Well, and again, I think that, I think the idea of having a rotation, I think is really, is really a, is a nice way of doing that. I think giving them a student, a student board member, because, you know what? The bottom line is, we can check whether they've gotten on it or not. I mean, we know that people, you can check to see whether they've got, they can write their notes, because every single one comes here with the, with it right there, and gives the, gives it up there.
Yeah, Van has it.
Van? Hi. Yeah, that way it's recorded. Yeah.
So...
State your name.
Van Fine.
Thank you.
Student board rep. I think that all these rules about the responsibilities of the board members are very important and nice for them to know ahead of time. But, if you get the right people involved, you won't need to make it so strict or, or rehash it so many times, because they will be the type of person who will just do it naturally. They will show up at meetings, they will read the agendas. That's why I think it's really important to start with the application process for the role, because if you get the right people, that kind of dictates the, the format of how, how the, the organization will be structured. Right?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I agree with you. When I was looking at some of the applications that Sherri and Veronica got, it, it's, you're supposed to write about what this means to you and how, how, I mean, it's certainly a more involved application than I think some, I don't know if you filled out an application, or if it was just like, hey, you want to do it.
Who's willing to do it?
Let me tell you how my application went.
Okay.
I was approached by Mr. Trocchio. He said, "You're the only one in Montavista who seems to care at all." So...
There you go, you're it, you're it.
You can do it. And then, I was also encouraged by both, by both Mr. Trocchio and Mr. Wagner to just go get my report, and I was allowed to leave, no pressure on me to stay, don't have to be there, you just want to go in and get out, because you might want to do other things. It was not treated as something where I could learn from. It was just treated as, you can get some community service, you can show up at these meetings, you can see what it's like.
Because that's the parameters.
And that's the way I think it is. And you know what? We have some, had some of the best representatives from Back Bay.
We have.
That's definitely before you, yeah.
Well, and we've, but we've had good ones from every, every school.
Yeah, thank you.
Before I got to Back Bay, I was not thinking it would be that, that great of a school, but the strength of character of some of the students there is insane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I think, I think those are good points that he brings up. And I, I think maybe we should look at this as, in terms of when people apply at individual schools, it has to be a more stringent process, and maybe, you know, kids that are probably more involved in youth in government, they're interested in government versus the popularity contest or something like that, maybe those are the kind of people that should apply. And our application should be redo the application for each board member within the school versus the application for a, one student board member.
Do they get a student packet that talks about ASB and whatnot, when they register in class anymore?
About ASB?
Well, I think if we put a page about, you know, that, you know, we'll be looking for applications, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, this is a role, you know, if your student is interested, and send it in their student packet, so that, number one, they can, and we put what their expectation is, and, and then, number two, they can have a discussion with their parent, too, about it. And that we do put, please plan on attending until nine o'clock, you know, and, and put in all the, you know, bells and whistles, and let's send it out next fall and see, you know, how many applications we get. We may get 100, and we may get one, or none.
What did the principal say?
I have not talked to the principals about it.
You haven't had a conversation with any of the principals or activity directors?
But, but, why couldn't we do it in the spring?
Well, we could.
Yeah.
For, for implementation.
Okay.
And put it to juniors and seniors.
For next fall. For 18, 19.
Well, and that's the other question I was going to, was going to ask, was, it looks like all of them are for, for seniors.
Yes, I did notice that.
And I just wonder whether this is, this is an opportunity...
It's not always the case.
It's not always been the case, and there have been some carryovers. I, I wonder whether seniors are the really, they've got so much going on, that I'm thinking, oh, my God, you know, maybe this is...
But juniors have so much going on, too.
Yeah, juniors are way more...
Juniors, seniors, yeah.
Was the hardest year. And seniors, I saw that, and one of, she's talking about one of the other applications.
Yeah.
It said only juniors apply for your senior year.
Which I thought was interesting, too. Which I thought was a really smart idea, was that...
Actually, and, and that would work, because they would be seniors, but if kids are interested in, in using this to help them with college, they can say, they were accepted as a student board rep.
They're a little more mature, they can probably drive themselves here.
Maybe.
Yeah, they...
But if you have a rotation, you know, then, then you make sure that...
If it's a rotation, I think you have to have it more open.
And of course, if you're not up, you're welcome to stay. We wouldn't want any student rep that really was, I mean, if we had five students with the level of interest that want to stay at the meeting, I think that would be fabulous. That would be our bumper crop here.
Whether, if, if you had a rotation, is it only one board member that comes to the meeting and sits on that dais, and then the rest of them feed their reports into that one and that one?
No, I don't like that one.
Or have all of them come at the same time?
I like them all coming.
I do, too, but I'm just asking the question.
Up here, but the others are still...
One of the, one of the roles, one of the, the formats, all of them were required to stay till nine o'clock. That was part of the, when you took the job, you know, obviously, if someone's sick, but, you know, that you were expected to stay till nine o'clock. And then, then everybody is involved.
Should we have students here, and maybe ASB advisors or a, should we have a little broader group to make the decision? I'm, I, I feel, yes, I was, yes, I was a teenager, I can speak to that. Yes, I was a, an administrator, I could speak to that, but with everything, I never had as much on my plate as kids have today. I would like to know, thank goodness, we have a student here, thank you, Van, but I would like to hear from the other reps, would you have still, could you have still, what would you think? We, we can... We, we can start it with, we want students to become more involved and here's where we're headed. And we can come up with like a skeleton and then ask for the input to revise it because.
Well, it's a job description and it's an expectation, just like when we, you know, fly a job. I mean, that's, and you send it, I don't know how you would, my only concern would be if it went home in their packet, registration packet, or they got to see it online, then, then there's a little bit, I mean, I feel a little better that everybody's had an opportunity.
I think everybody should have an opportunity.
But versus in the springtime, you know, you're going to have teacher, like, who's responsible to make sure that everybody gets the memo? You know, that this is an opportunity. So I kind of like that and, you know, seeing what happens and who comes forward, you know.
See how many you get.
And what do you do if a school doesn't have a representative?
Well, that's what I'm saying, that we don't know that.
Right, these are all the things we have to.
Yeah, we don't know. And each year, each class is, you guys all tell me when you're teaching and at your school, that there's different, you know, levels of motivation or.
Same reason brothers are not exactly the same, even though you think you've done everything the same to raise them.
I like the, I like the concept, one, of having an application process. I do like, I like the concept of.
Application process.
The exact same application goes to, to all schools. I like the, I like the recommendation portion. I like the fact that in a couple of them here was that they had to provide three letters of recommendation. One from a teacher, one from a principal, and one from somebody else. I think that, you know, so I think that, that that's something that has to be done. The question is, is, I like having a conversation with the current student board members. And having, having, saying, you know, say, now that you've sat through this, um, we're looking at, we're looking at changing it. And let's be real honest with them, we are, it is going to change. It is going to change. Now, you know.
Did they get the memo?
For your colleagues, because I, I think we need to send a message to the activities. Because when is it, when are ASB elections, they're coming up soon, right?
Yeah. May?
For following years. So we have to let them know that there is going to be, there's a change in the process. Now, whether we have, whether we can get that all done by May, may not happen. And it may have to wait, but we want to make sure that no one gets appointed in May. That it may be that we have to work through a whole bunch of bugs and not do the process in September.
Well, maybe it's something that could be done in June since, other than the seniors that are crazy busy in June. In June, juniors aren't typically as busy and that might be a good time to, if we can't get it done in by May, do you know what I'm saying?
I would make no assumption.
There you go.
You put it out there, what we want, what are expected, and then let's see what comes back. When it comes back, then it's going to really, you know, tell us.
Well, but here's, and I'm playing devil's advocate, but here, picture this. If we, if we stop the thing and we wait until, you've got situations where, okay, are they going to be on ASB or not? So if they're on ASB, that's a period in the day.
On the master schedule.
On the master schedule. So kids are registering. So if they're registering, they're in, they're, I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate, okay? So we say, stop the presses, nothing's happening. So now a kid is pre-registering for senior year. And all of a sudden, he's filled up his whole, his whole day. His whole schedule is all filled, but now he says, you know what, I kind of would like to do that. The application is in Sep- in September, so with how much juggling is for an ASB position, you know, does he go on to ASB? Does he, is he now part of ASB or is it an adjunct and he, does he have to be in the ASB class? I'm asking the questions.
Why can't, I don't understand why you can't do both, why you can't be on ASB and.
Because it's a class.
You can be on ASB and be a student board member, you absolutely could do both.
I'm not saying, I, I am not saying that. I am saying that if you're, in fact, if you're on ASB, you are, that's a zero, that's a zero, that's a class.
Zero period.
That's a period in your day. And so the question is, a kid signs up for his class, he fills up in some class, in some schools, it's eight periods, in some schools, it's six periods. Okay, so now, he doesn't have an ASB in his, in his master's schedule, on his class. But now is he, is, does, does he have to?
Oh, does he have to be in ASB?
Does he have to have, does he have to have a period assigned to him on the master's schedule? Or, do you see what I, you know what I mean? Are you getting what I'm saying?
I get what you're saying now. Can we have a student board member that is not part of ASB? That it, that it is not going to get class credit for being here, they'll just get resume credit or.
I don't, yeah.
Transcript credit, does that make sense?
Technically, they're ASB.
It's why, it's why most of the ASB are zero periods is because they don't have classes. And so that's why it doesn't really affect their schedule. But certainly, they can be in, in the ASB program without having it on their, on their schedule. We do that in athletics sometimes too, kids are, are in the sport, but for some reason aren't in the class for reasons, but they can still participate.
Okay.
And placing, and placing a class in the fall is not unusual because you have your freshman class elections in the fall.
Okay.
That are new to the school.
Okay, all right, so I, I.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going, I'm going, playing devil's advocate saying, so that's just, I just am asking the question.
Perhaps what, um, I heard a, like a job description, which is a really good place to start. But in order us, for us to be able to craft something for you, it might be good if we can hear from the board exactly what purpose the student members are going to play. Are they going to provide, am I getting ahead, I'm sorry?
No, 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 go, go.
Uh, are they going to provide advice to the board? Are they going to be the student voice to the board? Are they going to go back to their student bodies, share what the board decisions were? Are they almost like ambassadors for the board? Where they're invited to go to ma- major events in the district and present? Are they expected to go to some of the service clubs on behalf of the board and talk about their schools? So if you could think about, what is it you want these students to do as far as a service to the board and to the district? Then we can sit down and craft a job description. The application, uh, that would be something to good to get some feedback from your advisors and from your ASB members. Uh, when we get to that point.
Student advisors. Okay, so should we make a list of what?
Well, first I'd like, I'm sorry. I think we should decide, would we like to have six student board members that rotate or one student board member?
Six or twelve.
I want six.
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 It's six student board members, if the site has two on their own to come in, that's fine, six or what? Each school will be represented.
Just some feedback.
I like that better, I just wanted to make.
Yeah, because when you have one, there's more of a commitment, like, I'm the guy.
I understand that.
Okay, go ahead.
What I was going to say was that, what Mrs. Yelsey was saying is if there is, if, if we do the rotation, that if they have a calendar with a, with, you know, this is your meeting, or these meetings are yours, where you will be on the dais. And, and the expectation is you will participate and know what is on that agenda, that type of thing.
Okay.
And I think that resolves that issue.
Well, it also might help that, that, that meeting is, if we have it every two weeks, the first two weeks are, anything that pops up in those two weeks is your responsibility, you will be the ambassador for that. You know, it's almost like this, these two weeks, that's, if anything pops up. A WASC accreditation, regardless of what school it is, it's your, you've got the rotation, it's your, it's your two weeks, you got two weeks.
Oh, got it, for the going to the, and being the ambassador, got it. Going out to sites and grand opening the library, Van has enough.
But that has to work in their schedule too, so, you know, they're not many board members.
Yeah.
All right, so I know that if I were told that I could only come to two weeks of board meetings and then not come to any more because of this rotation thing.
You can come to all of them.
Okay.
But you'd only be on the dais.
So it's for use of the dais, would, would students who were not assigned for those two weeks still be able to give input?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And they could stay too.
They could stay.
It sounds like you guys are considering only giving the position to seniors?
No, I don't think.
Well, we haven't gotten there yet.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
You know, my thinking is, is that we keep it open and see what happens. Because if we just narrow it to seniors.
I, I don't want to narrow it to seniors.
Then you may only get three.
Right.
Is that what you're thinking or do you like the?
Uh, I like it being anybody because anybody can do well here, if they have the commitment to do so.
It's a good stepping stone for anybody.
You, you might want to offer some sort of compensation, like credits, school, school credits, some, some grade or something. I think that sort of thing might, um, might bring in people who just do it to get those credits. Again, if it, if you really want people who are passionate about it, they'll do it without getting anything. I'm not getting a grade for this.
How come? How come you're not, how come he's not getting credit?
A week after the, uh, ASB wasn't stated, they made it a fourth period Back Bay class. And at the time I wasn't in Back Bay, I wasn't in Montavista, I just recently moved there, but I'm still not in that period. So the only thing I get for coming here is a couple of community service hours.
Okay. Well, that's good too, because how many do you have to do?
And this could be part of your senior project.
Okay, so we want them to serve as ambassador, what else do we want them to do? Or are we out talking about that now?
Well, we want them to come to the board meetings and stay till at least nine o'clock.
Until the, yeah.
That's right.
And, and the board meeting could be over by then, please don't stay till nine.
Turn off the lights at nine and they can leave at nine.
Especially the expectation is that at least the one that's sitting on board.
Up till, up till nine o'clock.
Unless, yeah.
Yeah, you have to, because Karen said, well, what if, you know, what if we're out before nine?
Wishful, wishful thinking.
Sitting here by themselves, you know.
We, I remember there was a board meeting like that, what was it, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, something like that.
We have one a couple of weeks ago.
I think that also the expectation is that they will, they will be in communication with the board, the board rep, the past president, because she's the, she or he is the liaison, that, that there, there's an expectation that she, uh, he or she will liaison and have a, have a conversation prior to the board meeting with, with their board.
Oh, with the, with the, okay.
With the board liaison, so there's an expectation of that.
And perhaps a couple of meetings.
Could, could you, go, would you repeat that?
Well, I think the expectation is that if they're, if they're sitting, if, if they have the rotation, the expectation is that they're going to be, they are going to meet with the, the past president and, and talk about the agenda, what's on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
They have their own agenda prep meeting.
Kids, I think some training is in order.
Yes, other than that one little.
Other than coffee at Pete's, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
That's pretty much what I do, you know, if a student will ask.
The expectation is also that they would be sitting on your, your student advisory.
Ooh, all of them?
But they also have to.
No, then that eliminates the opportunity for somebody who.
We need to know from the parent, knowing that they're.
The only problem with that is that that's open to kids that aren't always representative on ASB. So we leave it pretty open and we ask for diversity, not necessarily somebody who's on ASB. They wouldn't be excluded, but I wouldn't want to make it a.
But I could ask at our next meeting too.
Pardon?
I could ask at the next student advisory.
How many of you, but you've had board, student board members on that committee?
I have one now, Jalen, but that's about it.
And Van.
And Van, but that's about it, it's usually not very big.
I just don't want to overcommit this position again, like I said, if we say yes, they have to go to student advisory and come to the board meeting every other week till nine, if it goes that long. And read the agenda on Friday before and so that you understand what's going, I mean, I'm sorry, that's like a whole class in and of itself.
Yeah, but we have enough students that, um, you know, where they can spread the work, you know, and somebody that may, you know, I think by just putting it out there, I think we'll be surprised at who wants to do it, you know, I mean.
I think we will too.
I, I, you know, I think.
I bet more of the kids, like the youth and government kids, don't even think about applying for something like this.
Because it's an ASB position.
Right.
And, you know, so I agree with Martha too, that she, you know, that we need to be clear on it. And there are so many factors, but until we put it out there and see what they.
Kind of respond.
See what comes back, you don't know what little tweaks you need to make. Yeah, you know, and, and I, I don't want to control it. I'm, I'm more want to just be real specific what our expectation is. I think that's our role now. And then have them come back and, you know, and see who shows up.
So you don't think we should be part of the selection process?
No. I don't think that it's a problem if we are, I mean, off the top of my head, I, I don't know, I mean. I will tell you, I will defer that to Martha and Judy because they've done it before, you know, where, you know, we've had to do that. And they, we've gotten really great students to serve on committees that we are doing in the community. And they're, you know, they're really good at it, but.
Superintendent selection committees.
I, I think it wouldn't hurt to have as a, once they've been selected by their school, to have them meet with us. To make sure that, that they understand, yeah.
Well, I, I, I mean, I'll tell you, I mean, it was interesting because the interview process at, like, Joint Fullerton, they meet with the, the Director of Administrative Services, that must be you. Is an academic position?
It would be.
It could be Russell or Kirk.
Oh, is it like Kirk or Russell?
So then there's also the one from Garden Grove, that's the board committee made up of ASB presidents, principals, and others, interview. Interview them.
The only thing is it goes back to being a popularity contest.
Right.
That's why, uh, you know, I mean, I would like it, I think it elevates it, that it's not necessarily interviewed by students. It elevates it.
Oh, I agree.
It's like if it's interviewed by three principals or, or Russell Lee Sung or, or.
The former student board member could sit on it also?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, yeah, I think it's fine to have a student, I just, I don't want it to be what you're, we were afraid of. Is that it's just not considered that important, let's just, okay, who wants it, you know? And instead of getting someone who really is truly interested in it and wants to do it.
I think that we have to, and again, the issue becomes one of, you know, there may be individuals that are really interested. But until you see what their, their caseload is, I mean, we don't want to add more stress to them. And they want, you know, so I, I, I think that having them submit their caseload, you know, their course load and taking a look and saying, gee, you know, you're a great candidate, but you're a little bit overcommitted. You're doing athletics, you're doing the school play, oh, you're in the band, I, I, I mean, hello.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that, that perhaps that's.
But we shouldn't have to do that, their site should do that.
And that may, you know, that, that's probably coming from the principal. So if the principal wants to, you know, submit three rec, three people and say, okay, and then the board says, we'd be happy with any of those individuals. We've, we've thoroughly vetted them, we've talked to their teachers, we've talked to that.
We had a student, we, and I think this is important to bring it up because, you know, for me, he was one of the best representatives we ever had. And this is probably going back fifteen years ago. And, um, and, you know, he applied and he was actually transferred to another high school for behavior issues. And, um, and then, but, and applied and we kind of said, okay, you know. And he turned out to be probably, it's in my memory, probably one of our, you know, our best reps and did his homework.
Ended up at Georgetown University at the end.
That's right, so.
I know, that probably changed his life.
Probably, well, we gave him, you know, it's that restorative part, you know, that, you know, that gave him an opportunity.
There's a couple of people that are, keep commenting that were, Gahel Bohardo from Costa Mesa High School. He was a student board member here, he keeps posting on now.
He's married, now has children in our schools.
Well, that's the one I'm talking about, by the way, that's the one I'm talking about. Martha, another one who was really good was Liz Parker's brother, yeah.
Well, the point is that we have a, I think we all agree, we would like a higher level of commitment and educational opportunity. One of the things that Mrs. Floor was saying is that this is an opportunity to participate or at least be very actively observing the grassroots government in action. And right now, the participation isn't, it's the opportunity to speak in public in front of a televised group. That's the opportunity our students are, are experiencing. And I love that we're going to get a higher level of involvement because it's, it's exciting and it can be good. And then we will have a responsibility to not have that poor person sitting down at the end of the dais the whole time and still just doing, wishing that they had their homework in front of them so they could do their homework with it.
And I guess.
Even though part of our meetings are pretty mundane.
I guess the thing is that in terms of participation, it really is, will be up to them. If they say, you know, I would love, we know that students have participated in, in, in selection process. They have sat on our superintendent interview committees. We've had, always had at least two representatives whenever we were having, um. whenever we were having, um, hiring a superintendent.
Who came off of a student board member.
Who came off of student board members, they were the student board members and they, they were involved in the, the interview process on the two pan, on the two panels that we've always had. So, I think that it, it, it makes it so that we want to make sure that they, if, if they want to avail themselves of additional opportunities, if they want to go to, um, if they want to be, go and serve as, go to CSBA. Okay, we'll, we'll figure out a way to do that, to provide you training. If they want to, if they want to attend the police, uh, police associa, Newport Beach Police Association.
Breakfast?
Breakfast, great, we'll see whether, you know, if there's space, terrific, we'll provide, you know, we, I guess we have to be really cautious about gift of public funds, but again, at the same time, it's up to, you know, if, if they can make it what they want. We certainly want them to make sure that they, they're not overcommitted in terms of their schoolwork and their athletics and their family time and their sleep, we want to make sure that's, we have a nice balance, but we also want them to make sure that they, you know, that they are committed to serving and the expectations of doing their job which is.
And we have sent students to the CSBA convention before.
So, to bring this to a close, um, I think we've decided, um, that we're going to go for six board members that will be rotated, um, and, um, we have a lot of other things to talk about, but, um, we, we can, um, if you think of any more things that you think would be a possibility that they do, you can, um, email them to, to Dr. Navarro and they'll start working on a piece that goes out. Then, I guess we need to have a meeting about the application?
Well, I, I would.
Or is this something we can do?
Well, first, I think, uh, what you, yeah, let us get the, uh, better for lack of a better, the description of the position going.
Right.
And then, uh, what we can do is come to you with samples of applications.
Okay, yeah, we got a couple.
There are some very good samples in this packet, yeah.
Do we want, do we want to have alternates at schools or just have the six?
Um, it's my thinking, if, if you're an alternate, I mean, i- if you get the position, to me, that means it's kind of special. You're kind of special, you got the position and, and you're responsible for it. If you don't, if you don't come, then, um, if you miss more than two meetings, then you get replaced. If you don't.
Cause we should have seven, maybe we have seven.
What's the seven one?
So, that there's more, there's, there's six that represent the schools and there's one at large that in case one of the six can't make their rotation, we've got someone to fill it in.
But then we don't have, then, that person happens to be from Corona Del Mar, but the Costa Mesa zone is out, so do they give the Costa Mesa a report? No, why, why can't they have a back?
My thinking is if someone's sick, they send the report in to the person on, is going to be on the dais.
I like that better.
That's fine.
It's not like, it's not like we have to have seven so that they break a tie, cause they're not voting, that's okay.
But those are all things that we, once we have come up with what our expectations are, then we need to move into what kind, how you do the application, because the application has to tie into.
I agree.
What are the expectations?
I would really like to have a conversation with all four of the, of the six activity directors, if we, do we have six activity directors? Or we only have four plus whoever the people are at the other two schools.
You have one at each of the high schools except for maybe Back Bay, I think, uh, our AP there is the activities person.
Yes.
But could the activity director? I think it's really important that we have a conversation because they're the ones that are, aren't the, aren't they the activities director who, who manag, manages ASB and who manages those?
But they manage ASB, they wouldn't manage, for instance, youth in government, so.
But do they manage the?
I agree, I agree, Karen, I, I think by putting it on the activi, the ASB guy, it makes it ASB-ish. Rather than having the application go out to all the students and they're turned into the principal.
But I think whatever. We were talking about having them, I'd like to have, I'd like to have site involvement first.
I, I think the activities director is just because I, I, I guess I look, no, because there's going to be someone, somebody's going to need, there's going to be a need to be a point person at each school.
But it could be an AP.
It could be an AP.
AP is at Back Bay, that's who handles it.
I know, but don't they, but they, let's be real clear, these kids are going to be getting some sort of credit at their school. How are they going to get that credit? So, perhaps we should have the principals here and their ASB person.
How about, um, how about Dr. Bar, Bar Mesteller has a conversation with the principals, however he chooses, and to get their input on the best, they, what way they would like, whether it would go. My, my only concern was the ASB, using the ASB person was because that's the way we've always done it before and so it feels like the same thing, and so if it's somebody different, it feels like more of a school thing. That was just my.
Well, all I'm saying is, these kids are going to be getting credit somewhere, they have to be placed in something, right?
Sometimes you have to, sometimes it's good to think outside of the box and often you don't, it doesn't get highlighted on your transcript that you're a student board rep, and so what maybe the board ought to think about, it's kind of like what we do for those students who, uh, pass three AP classes and take two college courses, they actually get a notation on their transcript.
Yeah.
Ooh.
And so putting a student board rep notation on there and with an embossment of a seal.
There's your carrot, that's your carrot.
Would be what you would want them to have.
And in order to do that, they have to have a higher level of responsibility.
I just want to make sure that there's somebody, there's a point person at the school and whoever that is has that responsibility so that Sherry knows who to call.
Well, I think then we should start with the principals and the principals can determine if it's themselves, if it's an AP or if it's their ASB person, the person that they want to have that, that's up to them, they run the school.
Principal or his designee.
Okay, so is there anything else I should, so you're going to come back to us with that piece? He's going to come back to us with his piece? And, and then Van's going to say one thing and then, um, and then we can start working on the application after that. So, I'm hoping we can have another meeting in a couple of weeks, cause.
Oh, Sherry, another meeting.
It'd be great to have this go, maybe before the next meeting, it'd be great to have this go out by the end of May.
Can't we choose this by the beginning of May?
LA Cities, LA Cities has a good.
I liked it, I liked the one where they wrote the, um.
Essay.
And I like the fact that it's coming from the Student Involvement Development and Empowerment Unit.
Oh, I love that, do we have that?
Who's that?
Well, when you have six hundred thousand students, you have a lot of.
I guess you have a lot of people.
Units.
Yeah, okay, Van, you can close this out.
I'm really sorry for interrupting you all so much.
No, 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 no. You don't have a buzzer.
Yeah, that's, that's true, um, I was just thinking, you're giving these students a very adult responsibility. And this point person thing, it would be really cool if the students had a, had a direct relationship with the board.
I agree.
The people the board contacts in the case of a problem with the student is the student directly to them, because they, they have this big responsibility. That, that's why I like what I do right now, because I don't really go between with Mr. Wagner, I send an email to one of, one of you great people and I get a response and I get, I get to be connected, I, I'm in the loop in that way.
Right.
Which, which is really important.
But you should also be the liaison back to your site.
Definitely, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
And we'd like to see, think that maybe you got a greater credit or something.
Yeah, we'll talk about that some more.
Perfect.
Definitely, thank you, okay, so, um, anybody have any last words before we, what do we do next? Go into closed session.
Close session.
Can I make a, one suggestion though, and that is to go back to the principals and say, we're putting a hold on, so they, they all know that in May, that there's not going to, I mean, I think we need to be really clear that we are changing it.
I'll bet you that Dr. B has already sent him a text.
Have you sent him a text already, Dr. B?
Not yet, but I will.
I, I just think it's really important that we let everybody know that.
We're redoing the process.
That's redoing and.
That there are changes being made in the process.
That please don't, don't be in the process of having an election for this position.
Business as usual.
Yeah.
Sherry, thank you for this.
Thank you, and Veronica.
It's a really great job.
And, Mrs. Snell, great idea bringing, I think you, I've enjoyed this discussion.
You have anything?
We haven't done anything like this.
Good.
I like it.
Does she have anything to add? Does Sherry have anything, yeah?
No, I, he's not too important here.
It says that he's secretary, but.
Okay.
I think the process is great and we will notify the schools and let them know that there is a change coming, so they shouldn't elect a student board member in their normal way and we can put this together as quickly as you get the information to us.
Wonderful, okay, thank you, so we are going to go into closed session.
Okay, before we all leave, I want to let you know that, uh, I'm going to, uh, ask the board president to allow me to make everybody aware that as of today, all of our, uh, meetings will be recorded and closed captioned. Uh, and, uh, it's going to be very important for us, so what may, what reminded me is if I do this and you're speaking, you're going to get drowned out, okay? So, Sherry wants me to make sure, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll share this with the audience, you really have to have your microphone right in front of your mouth, it can be heard.
This will get that out to the public so they are aware.
Well, I'm going to make a public statement.
This is, yeah, completely on the wrong side of my.
I think you said. Side conversations are not muddled.
Side conversations, uh, will muddle the sound and ca, whatever you say will be, uh, closed captioned.
But, but I, I, my, my comment was more to get it out to more than people who may watch our school board meeting, I don't know how many that is, but just to the general public that.
Oh, we should do it again, make this announcement, I would love to have you remake this announcement again at six o'clock to.
That's what I mean.
You're going to, okay.
So, so a, as a matter of form, you want consistency? In other words, what's written is what we read, or are you going to provide this? And so, even though, well, for example, we're going into closed session, should I be reading this? Community input on closed session agenda items regardless of whether there's anybody here? Because it's a matter of, that's because it's here and then, then the board president says, seeing no cards, we move into a, into closed session, I mean, I just want to make sure that if we're being consistent, are you providing all of this to closed captioning and should I be reading this entire thing?
The agenda is printed online for, for reading, the closed captioning comes in with all the verbal information that's presented by you and the, um, closed caption also picks up anything that's on that screen.
Okay, so, again, do I read this or do I read portion or what?
Let me just show you some of our cheat sheets that we have.
Just want to ask the questions.
Oops, I'm missing my cheat sheet, Sherry.
It's at the top.
Oh.
What did I do with it?
What did you do with it, Mrs. Flor?
So, um, for example, and, and I think, uh, Board Member Flor makes a good point, uh, should you read out all of that? And I would say at the beginning, it would probably be a good idea to go very formal. And then if there are no cards, you just go in the closed, in the future, you may want to take that shortcut, but for as we start off, it would be good to go over every part of the agenda. Other, other tips that are here that I will share with you is, we've asked the board president to repeat who moved and who seconded, so that it's clear and not, um, and so she's got notes here, um, and then, uh, you know, any, anything that makes, that we need for clarification, uh, should be also voiced. Uh, so that, uh, okay, that was a unanimous vote, no, no, no dissension, it passes seven zero, something like that, to be more clear, because it's going to be closed captioned and.
They're picking up what we say.
That we're using the same system that OCDE uses.
Oh, okay.
But e, even though they're very accurate, they're not one thousand percent accurate, is that right, Annette? Okay, so, um, you know, it may take, uh, a few words and, uh, especially if you're off to the side and it's not clear, it may even, uh, caption it as something very different. So, be very careful, uh, of what gets shown up there, even though it can be corrected immediately, it'll still get out.
Okay.
Okay?
May we also add a disclaimer at the beginning of the, when we have a, a general audience, please silence any electronic devices, we've had that, if, if it becomes routine or if it's just, even if it's just printed on the agenda thing, at least occasionally we'll be having a really good presentation and something goes, it's so standard, it's everywhere, please silence any electronics.
It says right here, is it very tough?
Does it say it?
Persons in the audience refrain from not asking.
It doesn't say no electronics.
It doesn't say electronics, but.
I'm just asking, if you think it's kind of obvious, then we don't need to do that.
We can make that, we can put that at the top.
Or do you think I'm just being?
Okay, so, Martha, do you want to read that?
All right, so, item number three, community input on closed session agenda items. Comment cards are requested to be completed prior to addressing the board. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the closed session agenda only. Each speaker has three minutes to address the board and speakers may not cede unused time to other speakers. Per Board Policy ninety-three twenty-three, there is a maximum of twenty minutes on, of topics per minutes of to.
Edit.
Edit, uh, um, not read, uh, with board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. Depending on the pa, on the nature of the comments, the board president or superintendent may respond or the board, or the president may call upon board members for brief comments, questions of clarification, provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information or request the superintendent to report back to the board at a subsequent meeting concerning the matter. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video record and DVD copies of the complete meeting are available to check out from the superintendent's office for three business days or purchase for one dollar. When addressing the board, it is helpful to state your name and address for the record.
Okay, and seeing no cards, we're going to go into closed session. Okay, welcome, I'm going to call the meeting to order, March twenty-seventh, and we are going to start with the, uh, opening ceremonies, uh, moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance, um, led by Van.
Ready, again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, we're going to start with the adoption of agenda.
Move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, the, um, adoption of agenda has been moved by Dana Black and seconded by Dr. Davenport. Mr. Davenport, I had a doctor named Dr. Davenport. I have to repeat everything because now we're doing closed captioning, so I, that's why I'm appearing so stilted. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, now we want to move on to the adoption of minutes for March thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, and March third, two thou, March second, two thousand eighteen.
Move adoption of the minutes as presented.
Second.
Could we separate them so that I can vote on one and not on the other?
Sure, let's start with the adoption of minutes of March thirteenth.
Uh, move adoption of the minutes of March thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
And one abstention by Judy Franco, okay.
Move adoption of the minutes of March second, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we can move on, oh, yes, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Navarro.
So, I just wanted to, uh, let everybody know that, um, we have our closed captioning, uh, company now working with us. Uh, they will, uh, get this meeting, uh, tonight from Ryan and then they will take anywhere between thirty-six and forty-eight hours to add the closed caption to it, which point it will be placed onto a special channel. We now have a YouTube channel that will have all of our meetings that are, be available for the public to see. And, uh, you will notice the board, uh, will be, the board president will be, um, repeating who's moving and who's seconding so that it's clear and it's, can be, uh, it could be caught on the closed caption. Uh, and we also ask the board members and anybody who has a mic to bring the mic as close to your mouth as possible so that, uh, it can be, um, clearly. mouth as possible so that it can be clearly understood what's being what you're saying into the mic so that it's the captioning is accurate. This is a very good system, but it's not foolproof. There are maybe mistakes. And so the clearer we speak into the mic, the less the opportunity that something we don't want closed just to come out in closed caption would come out.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, there I have a question. Will there be an easy access on our website to explain how they how to get on the YouTube channel and everything?
Well, I will ask Ms. Franco to explain exactly how that works because our YouTube channel's been up maybe five days.
Here she comes.
Hi.
Good evening. So the YouTube channel that was created can be accessed a variety of ways. The easiest is probably on the homepage of our website. If you scroll down where it says Board of Education Meetings, you have your link to the meeting agenda. And right under it's board meeting videos. And it'll take you to our district's YouTube channel, which has two folders for you to browse through. One is just general district videos and the second one is Board of Education Meetings. So if you go there, you can scroll through. I believe all of them for 2018 have been posted on here by the superintendent's office.
Great.
So.
And they are translated into other languages.
I don't know the details of that.
There is the capability to translate into other languages. Okay, good.
Okay, we'll get that information out. But we've got it easy to connect to. That's wonderful. Thank you so much because that was difficult to get going. So I'm glad we're ready to go. Now, my favorite part of the evening, recognition of the 2018 Harbor Council PTA Reflections Program, Fourth District Award recipients. Vicky Waldo, President of Harbor Council PTA.
Thank you. Good evening, President Snell, board members, Dr. Navarro, cabinet and staff. We are very happy on behalf of Harbor Council this evening to bring to you the first and second place winners of the Reflections Awards for Orange County from Newport Mesa School District. We have some kiddies that were not able to make it this evening, but we're very happy to present those that were. And I'd like you to turn your attention to Cynthia Strassman. She is our Reflections Chairman, and she will make the presentations of our artists.
Okay.
Thank you, Vicky. Good evening, Presidents Snell, Dr. Navarro, board, cabinet, and community members, and student reps, and our special guests. We want to first thank you for taking this opportunity to celebrate and recognize our artist artistic achievements of our Reflections artists who've been particularly successful in their creative work as demonstrated by their school council and district PTA reflections, PTA exhibitions. The artists here tonight have placed either first or second in the Fourth District PTA Reflections campaign. In the literature category, receiving an award of merit, which is second place, this young man attends Adams Elementary School and is in the third grade. His literature piece is called Doritos. I am thrilled to present to you Aaron Gruber. In the photography category, receiving an award of merit, second place, this young lady is in second grade and attends Newport Newport Coast Elementary School. This young lady is Angeline Shipman.
Does she want her parents in the picture with her?
Yeah. Fantastic. In the film production category, we actually had three students in three different grade levels achieve an award of merit for their piece, two of which are not here tonight but are worth mentioning. This is Finn Miller. He's a second grader at Lincoln Elementary. And Catherine O'Deen, who's a seventh grader at Corona Damar Middle School. So congratulations to Finn and Catherine. The third artist in this category also attends Lincoln Elementary School and is in the fifth grade. Please congratulate Natalie Ashworth. These next two artists actually received an award of excellence, first place for their work. The first artist received an award of excellence in film production. He attends Corona Damar High School and is in the 11th grade, and this is Ian Turner. Ian could not be here tonight, but sends his thank you for the recognition. Last but not least, this artist did also receive an award of excellence for his film production work. In addition, he also received two additional awards, one award of merit for his visual arts. And he also, which I'll leave to the last, he also attends Adams Elementary School and is in the third grade. He represents a special artist division. And I'm happy to ecstatic to report that as of last week, he is a California State PTA Reflections winner. Please help us congratulate the artist.
Wow. So cool.
You've got to get it down.
Yay.
Thank you, everybody. And recognizing these artistic abilities and these artists art, you know, complements the learning process in the schools. And this is one way that PTA is able to partner with academia and helping, you know, flourish their abilities.
Cynthia, could you could you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I don't think it was working. Is it working okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, next year's theme is the heroes among us. So artists, please continue creating. This is such an important program to unleash your creativity and and also just, you know, expand your mind and grow. So thank you.
Cynthia, one other thing. The first gentleman you mentioned that wasn't here, was he supposed to be here? Because maybe some people walked in and I want to make sure.
Aaron Gruber.
He's not here. Okay.
We had Finn Miller, Catherine O'Deen, and Ian Turner.
Okay. And then one last question. So the young man from Adams Elementary, his work will be displayed at the PTA California PTA Conference.
Correct. That will take place at the end of April at the convention. Correct.
And will he go up there?
He will. I did make Ms. Duzabair aware that it will be displayed and they're able to come and see his work of art.
Wonderful.
And then his piece will move on to the national PTA level.
Wow.
So for the details.
Thanks for all you do. This is such an important program.
You're welcome.
And I'm just so excited. The more kids that participate, the better. It's a real nice opportunity.
Thank you.
So now that you've given out the the prompt, some of the kids can work on it over the summer if they want.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we are going to go to the student board member reports, starting with Van.
Tonight's report will be given by Melanie Nunez.
Okay, thank you. Melanie.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Melanie Nunez and I'm representing Back Bay High School. So the second trimester just ended, which means 11 weeks of school are left. This brings in the discussion of senior projects and I'm happy to announce that our seniors have completed their senior project interviews. And I want to give a special thank you to all the school board members who were on our senior project panels. We greatly appreciate your time and interest. Since the school year is coming close to an end, we've been exposing our seniors to college environments by recently taking field trip to local colleges. We've also been preparing them for the next big step in their lives by having weekly guest speakers come onto our campus to discuss career pathways. And now for some general information, we'll be having peer court on our campus this week as well as the soccer tournament held during lunch. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, Andrea.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm Andrea, representing Estancia. Our future Ego Night is on April 5, April 5 to welcome the class of 2022 from 6:30 to 8:15 in the main gym. Our seniors' yellow cruise was won out of 46 students worldwide with a perfect score of the 2017 AP exam in Spanish language and cultural.
Oh, my goodness.
She missed zero. And our HOSA program, which stands for Health Occupants Students of America, 37 students will compete in the Anaheim Convention Center, April 5 through the 8 with other schools. In 2016, only seven students were part of the HOSA and 2017, only 40. So our program has grown since then.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Nice. Congratulations.
Hello, I am Han Nguyen. I am the representative from Costa Mesa High School. I also serve on the school site council meeting. Our school is very active at this time. Our volleyball team is competing rigorously. Our band, our Vapa program, our string department just performed yesterday at the String Orchestra. And our band is having our concert on Thursday, the Bravo Concert. And our drum line is performing. And our color guard just achieved second place in the highest division that we've ever been in, Scholastic 3A. And they got second place. And there are many plays coming up or bringing it on. Musical just finished. And there are student-led productions. And we have many programs that are student-led that are progressing forward.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. I'm Max Johnson from Corona Damar High School. So AGS just hosted a visit from the Japanese exchange program that they have. And that includes teachers and students. And the partnership is also in a school in Japan. So I believe some of our students go there at a certain point during the year. Also, all of our spring sports just started their league. So everyone's excited to watch those games. And big news, I believe a lot of the board members were there as well. Our LRC was just opened and it's amazing facility. And now it's also open for students this last Friday. So I know I'm going to be using it and I believe a lot of other students will. Footloose concert or Footloose Play, excuse me, is this next week. So I'm pretty sure they're selling out soon. So everyone should get their tickets if you want to go see that. And our spring rally is next Friday, which is Clash of the Classes themed. And each student is able to get a free spirit shirt if they come by to the ASB room. So we're all excited.
Max, how how many students are using the LRC right now? I mean, it's still brand new and.
It's still brand new.
More than the library?
Yeah, more than the library. I know I'm using it on Thursday afternoon. So for a group project. So I know it's being used a lot. And a lot of teachers are suggesting it for their students as well. So I'm excited.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jordan Richardson and I'm representing Newport Harbor High School. This last week, we've had the Ares Dance Show. It was at 7:00 PM for four of the nights. And it was Dance 1, 2, 3, Dance 4, and Dance Team. They all performed and it was a great show. We sold out every single night. Our Newport Harbor winter lineup for was placed sixth at their ADLA American Drum Line Association competition on Saturday. Our basketball is playing a big game against Marina tonight at Angel Stadium. And this past week, we've had universities visiting. Today, we had Washington State and Maryville University. This week, we've also had elections for the next year ASB candidates like vice president, president, and secretary, treasurer, things like that. I'm actually running for sophomore class president next year. We have, we've been planning the academic rally during this week. And we're doing a thing where I know we're like, like, kind of giving awards to kids who have been doing good, but we're also doing a speech where because I know stress is a big thing for kids right now in like school. So we're going to have a speech where we say school isn't everything. And like although we're giving awards to people who are doing good, it's okay. Not school isn't everybody's thing. So that's a big thing that we're trying to work on. We have a spring concert on the 28th for Ensign and Harbor. It's like those own schools. And then last, we're planning eighth grade orientation on April 9. So that should be good.
Great. Thank you. Good reports.
Early college does not have a representative tonight because they're on their spring break.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Same as the college. Right. Okay. So next, we're going to go to Vicky Waldo, President of PTA, Harbor Council PTA.
Thank you. We were really happy to be able to present to you tonight the winners of our Reflections Awards because it's such a for Harbor Council and all of PTA, it's such an important program. We once again Cynthia is going to be running a Reflections workshop on May 9 for all of the schools representatives for Reflections to help train them and show them how easy it is to actually participate in Reflections. Last year was the first year we had done this and it did enable four different schools to have representation this year in Reflections. So she'll be running it again. It's free and they give snacks out and it's fun. And so we're really hoping for a lot of participation from schools that have not participated before to help make the program easy. Last week, we were very happy to attend the Fourth District PTA Administrator's Dinner. Thank you, Mrs. Matoie, for joining us. It was a pleasure. We had a lot of fun. Harbor Council was really happy to accept some awards on behalf of our schools. We did have three schools that received a certificate for 100% participation by teachers. We also were one of five schools that had a state winner that would be going on to national for Reflections out of the council. And then we were one of five councils out of 20 in Orange County that did have an increase in their membership. So we were proud winners. It was a proud evening for us.
Yes, it was.
And it was really a joy just to represent our school PTAs at the event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was delightful. Okay, so moving on to 13A, report on the engineering pathway at Costa Mesa Middle School and Costa Mesa High School. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lee Sung.
Okay, we're very pleased to provide this report to the board. As you know, with the board's support and commitment, we have been growing and expanding our career technical education in this district. We had Estancia High School back several months ago, and this is now our opportunity to showcase the great work that's going on at Costa Mesa Middle School and High School. And here you have a whole group of representatives for that program. We'll have Michael Boston come up in just a moment, but we have both of our principals, Mr. Jake Haley and Jennifer Padilla. They brought several teachers and some students for you to hear from today. So we're very excited and pleased to have them present to you tonight.
Okay.
All right. Well, President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, cabinet members, ladies and gentlemen, this is really exciting. The engineering pathways have increased dramatically. They're really, and it's really an exciting part of the CT program. I just checked about a half an hour before walking in here, 631 students now participating in engineering pathways district wide. Good portion of these at at Costa Mesa High School and Costa Mesa Middle School. And before I bring up Jake Haley and Jennifer Padilla to introduce their contingent, I just want to give out a big shout out. Jake Haley in particular in racing cross, who really kind of pioneered this at the from the very beginning, Veronese Vassal. Veronese Vasquez, Karen Up the Grove, also two teachers who have done so much. Nothing's easy at the beginning. When you kick these things off and they're big mammoth projects, you're going to have a few things go wrong. I have to say, this group has been so stellar to work with. They've got through the obstacles at the very beginning and it is now just a shining program. Recently, a couple of you were able to come to an engineering advisory meeting recently and the presentation was, it just blew everybody's socks off. It was an amazing presentation. It really showed you how far it's come. So without further ado, I want to introduce Jake Haley and Jennifer Padilla to introduce her team.
Well, good evening, President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, executive cabinet, distinguished guests, and student board representatives. It is hard to believe that four years ago, this was a concept, that this was going to happen at our school. At that time, we didn't have the facilities for it. We didn't really know our pathway. It was actually written, if you remember, that we were going to be doing, what was our final course? Design and Modeling, to finish off with either Computer Integrated Manufacturing or Computer Science Principles was initially kind of what the grant was written for. And I really applaud Michael and Annie for being open as we kind of got into the engineering and started serving our students. And you'll hear from our teachers recruiting them. Dr. Padilla is going to talk about our wonderful staff and their collaboration. But really, as our students started to get empowered at both the 7th and 9th grade level, started thinking about, right, what are you interested in? And we started to see it take a different road. And we really appreciate the openness of Michael and everybody involved, up to, of course, the board, to say, "Hey, this isn't the fit for us. We want to redirect." We feel that aerospace would be a better fit for the interests that we're seeing around, for some of the partners that we want to partner with in our backyard. And what I really appreciate, and I know I speak for all of us, is the answer was yes. How can we support that? You know, what can we do? How can we help? So now here we are, of those 600-plus students, 315 of those students are ours, grade 7 through 11. We have a vibrant program with three staff members who are dedicated to growing professionally as well as recruiting and retaining our students. We have a vibrant campus. We have two brand-new, beautiful facilities, one at the middle school, one at the high school. And as it was mentioned, I know Ms. Black was able to join us, we're starting to boom and it's really fun. So I'm going to have Dr. Padilla talk about our wonderful team members and then they're going to come up and that's going to be the real fun to hear from them.
Good evening. I just have to say that I feel so fortunate having been able to come on board and see the work that they were already doing here. I have, the model that we have at Costa Mesa, being a 7 through 12 school, really provides an excellent model for this type of program and pathway because at the 7th grade level especially, we're focused on exposure and exposing students to a subject that is very, very engaging, but it is also extremely difficult. You know, you're talking about very difficult math concepts that students at all different levels and abilities are engaging in and grasping. I have to also say, like Jake also mentioned, the collaborative efforts of this group are extraordinary. They have really found a way to pool on each other's strengths and be creative. And how are we as three staff members going to deliver eight-plus, you know, preps? And I'm going to let them tell you about the details of what that looks like, but I just really wanted to highlight those strengths. So please welcome Racine Cross, Veronese Vasquez, and Karen Up the Grove.
We call them the Dream Team.
The Dream Team, and Green.
Green Shreen.
Hi, I'm Racine Cross. I'm our high school engineering teacher. Before we kind of get started in our pathway, we thought it'd be good to kind of explain like how we got here. Like how am I standing here in front of you as an engineering teacher? Because probably about three years ago, I was standing up in front of you explaining about Math Common Core and how I'm an expert in that. And now I'm on a completely different path. So I was a math major in college. I was all math, knew I wanted to be a math teacher. Been here 10 years, been teaching math the whole time. And then three years ago, as I was knee-deep in Common Core, we got this grant to start Project Lead the Way. I don't think I was on anyone's radar to even teach it because we had so many other people at the school. Somehow though, my name got brought up and I got taken on a tour of another Project Lead the Way school. We went into their 9th grade class and they were doing CAD. And I was like, "Oh, my God. I've been wanting to learn CAD since middle school." I mean, it was hard at my high school. They didn't really have the offerings. It was, the community college wasn't close and I was taking honors and AP classes, so I couldn't fit it. By the time I graduated, I already knew I was going to major in math, so the CAD kind of just got pushed off to the side. So I'm like, "Oh, okay. You know what? I could do this. I'll teach CAD. Just one, though." I was going to teach the 9th grade class, but you're going to have to find someone else to do the rest. Fast forward three years later and I'm pretty much almost completely out of math and all engineering. So we can just say I fell in love with it. The kids love it. It's great to do something where you actually use math in a real-life, applicable thing that you get excited for. I love when the kids, we do a project and they're like, "We learned this in Math 1 a couple of years ago." I'm like, "Yes!" It applies to rockets. They don't just make this stuff up in math. It has YouTube. You're actually using it. And so it's great to see them actually like, "Oh, we should do these in our math class." Learning rockets in a Math 1 class might be a little bit too, but now you understand why we did it. So I'm super excited to continue on the journey and teaching more engineering classes, but that's kind of how I got here and out of the math world.
Good evening. My name is Karen Up the Grove and I took a little more circuitous route getting there than Racine Cross did. I actually come to you as a geologist because my background is in physical science. And so a little over a decade, I worked in environmental engineering as a consultant, as a geologist. I came to Costa Mesa High School as a science teacher about five years ago. And fortunately, about a year or so into my tenure there, they said, "Hey, come with us to that same tour." Then Racine went on and we went and saw a few other schools. And as a, as a physical science person, I love understanding how things work. And so I became a fit for the Automation Robotics courses, which is the engineering of mechanically how things work and how those evolve over time and how they relate to one another, which speaks to sort of where I came from back there. So I'm a lot newer to education than some, but I kind of bring with it the real-world experience because I worked, like I said, in environmental engineering, which was soil and groundwater and other things, but a very real-world, applicable perspective.
Thank you.
Hello, and I'm Veronese Vasquez. I come to you from a Chicano and biology background. So I got hired at Mesa seven years ago to teach 7th grade and 8th grade science. And as a first-year teacher, when they ask you, "Hey, can you take on this class?", you just have to say yes, right? And so I took on what was a Mesa class, Math Engineering Science Achievement Class, having absolutely zero engineering background, so I had to learn a lot. And then the class actually ended up getting cut, so I started teaching it as an after-school club. So I did that for three years and I really, really enjoyed it. Han was actually in my club and now he's in high school. So it's really exciting to just see them grow. So having had this exposure to engineering, when Project Lead the Way came on board, I immediately said, "Pick me, pick me" because I love that. So I now teach three science classes and three engineering classes.
So even though none of us have a background in engineering, I just want to assure everyone, we are qualified to teach these classes. We have to attend some pretty rigorous training. So all the middle school teachers have to do a full week, 8 to 5, 40 hours for their courses, where you're in a university and you basically go through the entire curriculum that the students do. You are the student and they don't let you leave until you can master everything. The high school courses are two weeks of 80 hours total. We've got to meet some pretty cool people and network, go to some really cool facilities. For my aerospace training, I got to go to Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, which was amazing because not only did we get to do the whole curriculum, but they had a bunch of extra stuff for us to do, like go in their flight simulators for Cessnas. We got to go in an actual wind tunnel lab and then go see some of their research and development facilities, which is great to bring back to my kids and just show them like, "Look at all these different things you can do with just this one career." So yeah, we are qualified to teach this. So these are our course offerings. In a second, we'll get into each one for 7 through 12. We currently have 7 through 11 currently being offered with next year adding on the final course in the pathway for 12th grade. I think one of the things I can say I'm most proud of for our pathway so far is the growth that we've been able to sustain over the past three years. So when we started, it was really just, here's two sections in 7th that each of them taught and I had two sections in 9th. The second year, we added on more middle school as well as the 8th grade electives. And then I added on a 10th grade class as well. And then this year, we held the same classes for middle school, the electives and our intro classes, and then also added on an additional high school. What's really awesome to note is the 311th graders that I currently have, probably about 25 of them have been in the course since 9th grade. So they took the 9th grade class, the 10th grade class, and most of them should sign up again willingly for the 12th grade one. So it'll be amazing. Our first cohort through, we should have about 25 four-year completers for the pathway, which for a high school, trying to get your A through G requirements, become eligible and competitive in college and take all the other electives plus this as an additional one is pretty, pretty great. The kids all self-select to take it, so there's not like a lot of like, "Oh, you need to do this because you're really good in math and science." The kids select. They come to me, they say what they're interested in. We have no requirements in terms of like enrollment. You don't have to be in any certain math or science course to take. We will take anybody at any level. We can easily differentiate and adapt the curriculum so that everyone can get something out of it. That way, if maybe your path isn't to go straight into a four-year, but maybe go to OCC, we can get you set up and ready for maybe some of their technical courses and hopefully feed it nicely with some of the programs that they offer.
So I'll go ahead and start off with 7th grade. So Karen and I teach a semester-long class. And at the semester, we pretty much just swap our preps so that the student's schedule isn't impacted and our preps just change. So I start off by teaching Design and Modeling, which is a baby version of what Racine teaches at the 9th grade. We learn how to use Autodesk and Venture. We learn how to sketch. We learn how to use a ruler. We learn how to collaborate with people. These are all really important skills for engineering, learning how to share your idea and not put someone else's idea down. We do a lot of challenges. So one of those pictures is building a catapult. So we launched marshmallows that were Poké Balls and their job was to try and catch a Pokémon that was just, you know, an X on the floor. They were really excited over that. So that was kind of fun. Yeah, I don't know what else I'd say to that class.
So then those 7th graders, for the entire year, they're either enrolled with Veronese in Design and Modeling or they're enrolled with me for Automation Robotics. And like she said, their content switches at the semester, so they'll get a full semester of each. Just like Veronese, at 7th grade, we really work on how it is to be a student working with other people. And my class is very materials-heavy. We have these great VEX kits that were built in as part of the Project Lead the Way curriculum. But man, is that a very materials-heavy class. So I was fortunate that with our grants, we were able to get enough sets of materials that I can run two courses concurrently with those materials. But we do have to work on how to share things, how to design things together because not everything kids build works the first time that they think it will. They're a little more complicated than Legos, but they're still really approachable. So they want to build, they want to try things. They don't always work as the way they intend them. So that's how we get through that engineering process as well, to build and try and then rebuild and hopefully take other people's ideas and reflections into account. So there are some pictures of them building some windmills, some pull toys, just basic mechanical things. And then we also pull out our Clawbot kits and do a little friendly class competition where they get to learn to drive and pick things up and see robots in action and be responsible for not only like using it, but actually building it from nothing to a functional robot.
And then it's back to me. So I teach medical detectives, which as a bio person, I love. So I get to add more curriculum because of my knowledge. So in that class, we learn how to use pressure cuffs. We learn how to use sphgmomanometers. We learn how to use stethoscopes. We do dissections. This semester, I had leftover hearts from my bio class. So we did heart dissection. We have brain dissections coming up. The grant was able to purchase clay kits and little model skeletons. So we were able to build heart models. And we also do DNA extractions from their, from their own saliva. And then what's really cool is that they learned that swapping saliva actually is a great way to exchange, you know, infectious diseases. That's what those pain cups are. So what we do is everybody gets a clear solution and they go swap fluids with people. And then at the very end, we see who got infected. So I always remind them like, "This is why you shouldn't be kissing people. This is why you shouldn't share water bottles. This is why you don't, you know, share chopstick." So it teaches more than just science and engineering.
Life skills.
Life skills, exactly.
And again, it's me again. So we do a lot of swapping back and forth. We teach out of the same room. We see all the same kids over the course of a year. So when they're not swapping saliva with other students in her class, they are in mine, learning, "Let me introduce the mechanics of how things fly." And I just sort of introduce them to a lot of concepts. Racine is going to take them through the actual math and specifics of how things fly. I just get them to the idea of, hey, something that's heavier than air can fly because of how you design it, because of the work that you put into testing it and all the different things. So we build a variety of different things that fly through the classroom air. Everything from straw gliders to balsa wood gliders, to hot air balloons, to kites, to just really opening up that idea that people, people started the idea of flight somewhere. So let's think about where we're going. And new this year, because we're always, this is the second year teaching these courses for us. We brought them in in our second year, so our third year overall. So every year, we're trying to do more and more things. So this year, I was fortunate to be able to write a grant application to our Costa Mesa School Foundation and they funded a field trip that we're going to be able to take to the Lion Air Museum, which is local to us. It's right there by John Wayne. So give the kids, again, just a little more exposure to the concept of flight and even the rich history with those people that have been pioneering it for decades.
Makes you want to go back to school.
So that's what happens in the middle school for 7th and 8th. So then comes our high school curriculum. What's awesome being 7th through 12 at one school is they can feed in very naturally. And if we don't see kids going from their classes into mine, we can team up and try to figure out why and make sure they understand like, "Oh, well, I didn't..." "Well, I already did engineering in 7th and 8th grade. I don't need to do it in high school." Then we can talk about like, "Well, what's different in the high school?", right? Engineering's just not a two-year thing. So it's awesome having them. What's great about my 9th grade class, like Veronese says, is her 7th grade class is like the intro to it. So it's awesome when I get some kids from her and they already know how to use the software I'm using. So we actually, this year, it's great. I told her, I'm like, "Oh, we're going like two times faster than I went last year. I'm already having to insert new projects." So my 9th grade class is all about engineering design. Pretty much, it's about using Autodesk Inventor to do real-life 3D modeling. We start really basic, just with shapes of squares and stuff. And then you can see from the slide, we get a little bit more detailed. So I decided to highlight some stuff we do that maybe you won't see if you go to another Project Lead the Way 9th grade class. You might not see this project. It was something special to our school. Our ASB wanted to increase the holiday spirit, so they came up with this door decorating contest. I guess they do them in the elementary schools, like you decorate your door for Christmas or Hanukkah. So they were like, one of the ASB kids was like, "It'd be cool if you did 3D printing on one of your doors." Well, I got the bright idea to take it. "Why am I just going to do one? My lovely castle of a room has 17 doors in it." So I'm going to decorate all 17 doors. So the kids, I challenged them. They got in a group. They had to design a themed holiday door that was decorated using 3D-printed objects. And so over the course of two weeks, we probably 3D-printed close to 200 pieces of art that the kids created themselves. So these aren't, you can go online and find stuff all over the internet and just download and send to your printer. I tell them, "If I'm going to spend six hours at school watching something print, you better spend an hour or at least making it." So our winning door is what I have up there for you was made by kids. It was a Star Wars-themed door. So they did everything from a Yoda in a Christmas hat to, I don't watch Star Wars, but I think it's the Star Destroyer. There was the Death Star. They even, they even took my advice. I was like, "You can't just put things and glue them on a door. Like there has to be a theme to it." So they, you know, had Yoda saying, "A Merry Christmas you will have" with it. We 3D-printed them. They hand-painted them because you can't 3D-print in colors. You can do solid color and that's... we 3D-printed them. They hand painted them because you can't 3D-print in colors. You can do a solid color and that's about it. So the kids even learned some artistic skills to put it all together. What was great about the project, not just doing the, you know, the door and the painting, is they actually got an appreciation for what the capabilities of our 3D printers are. So currently, thanks to the grant, I have three 3D printers, one for each year, pretty much. I keep adding a new one. Um, as cool as they are, they aren't the quickest thing in the world sometimes. Um, but it was great because at first the kids are like, oh, I have a giant door, you know, and they send me a part and I'm like, it's six feet tall, like, the printer's this big. It's a desktop printer. You need to go back and resize. And sometimes for a high school kid, especially like a ninth grader, it's sometimes hard for them to understand this idea of like, well, I already did it. But I already did it. Turn it in. Yes, but you need to redo it. Um, so there was a lot of that going on of talking, which I think was good for them, like, yes, you did this. Yeah, this is beautiful, but I don't have time to print this. Like, this is a six, and I would show them on the thing. You want me to print this tree? It's going to take me six hours and you're going to hog one whole printer for the whole school day. Cause it's not like I can leave it running when I'm at, at home. So I told them, you have 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I'm giving, like, that's how long I'm here for this thing to run. So you guys need to make some restraints. And so they got, they got better at it. And we got these really cool doors. All 17 doors in my room were decorated, um, for the holiday season. Uh, it's something I decide I'm going to do every year now.
Let me know when they're up. Yeah, thank you.
I wasn't sure if I was going to pull it off. Doors in a short week. So, but their skills, like you look at that and you're like, wow, that's all by hand. That's not drawing. That's you literally, like, think about paint and all they used was a line and an arc tool. And they have to get it to connect perfectly in order for that to become 3D. And then they have to do layers, like, so the Star Destroyer is built on different layers and each layer is a different detail. Um, and it all has to match perfectly or else like they get errors and it won't let them go. Um, this is a industry software that's used by professionals. So it's not easy to learn. It's definitely not user-friendly. Um, and it does take patience to like go through the kinks with it. So the ninth grade class, I like to tell them, like, this is kind of like your, your introduction. If you make it through this, I promise, we'll get to some like building and hands-on and, and a lot of this, but I need to make sure you can follow some simple directions on the computer before I start handing you some saws and, and some other, some other items. So that's the ninth grade course. And I usually do a pretty good job of convincing them that they should continue on to 10th grade, which is our principles of engineering, which is really where I get into different aspects of engineering. We spend about a quarter of the learning mechanical engineering. So everything's on gears and mechanisms. That first picture, it doesn't look like anything. It's actually a, a paper airplane launcher that launches based on weight and gravity. So they use the weight to drop and it provides momentum for their paper airplane to go. Um, and so that's what their first unit is. We have a whole unit on bridges. Um, so rather than going the traditional route of like, here's some toothpicks, like, let's sit here and glue those together. A lot of them have already done that in Mesa and in middle school. Uh, we build bridges out of playing cards and they support about five to 10 pounds of weight if they are struck, if they are structured right. Um, that's a suspension bridge, but, um, I learned really quickly, uh, the kids at our school don't really get, they don't really see bridges. I mean, to them, they see the overpass. They might see something at T-Winkle Park, but when I started saying, well, what's a cable stayed bridge? What's a suspension bridge? What's an arch bridge? They kind of were looking at me like, uh, is there a difference? Why would you need one? So that's a great project for them to actually physically construct. And because it's cards, they're flexible. So you can literally push your finger on and you can see the different ways the forces distribute through a bridge. And then we get into where we're now is, uh, machine control programming. So where they learn to use sensors to program stuff. So right here is a picture of a elevator that they program. So there's different buttons for each floor. And if you press like button one, it'll go to floor one. Button two goes to floor two. It's all automatic and autonomous and the kids do the programming for it. We'll do some stuff with solar panels, but the goal is to get them aspects to different kinds of fields. So that way, as I, I even tell a kid, if we do something like, I hate programming, stay away from computer engineering. But if you really enjoy the bridges, maybe you're on the path of like a civil engineer or something and you can explore that more as you go. Um, usually this class, if they take this class, they're going to take the 11th grade class because we do such different things. And so that's probably one of my funnest ones to talk about is the aerospace engineering class. Cause there's not many of them in Southern California, as I found out when I was trying to get some help, like, where should I do my training? Or with this, there's a very small group of aerospace teachers. Um, so when I had asked the kids, like, what do you want to do? They were kind of like, yeah, let's go aerospace. I mean, think about it's cool. SpaceX is doing all these cool things. You hear about it in the news. Um, and so it's a great way to grab their attention. So this is where we kind of take things to the next level. Like, we get a little more engineering and science-based. So not only do we do a lot of stuff that Karen does, like how does something fly? Why does something fly? So we actually get into developing, um, the airfoils of a airplane wing. And they do it on our 3D modeling software, which they've learned from seventh grade all the way up. So there's no longer an instruction. I can literally just hand them an assignment and they know how to use it. Uh, we can 3D print them. We have a mini wind tunnel that it can go in and we can collect data on lift and drag. Um, from there, we get into kind of like parts of an engine. So right now, we just built the fuselage, which is the body of a plane. They had to design a frame to support, um, a 150-pound pilot with a 100-pound wing, a 400-pound engine. And we run it through a stress analyzer on the computer to make sure the beams don't deflect too much. So that's an example from the different stages of their frame. And then probably, I think, one of their, their most exciting things is we have Flight Sim software on our computers. So after I do all this talking about, oh, you know, the flap does this, the rudder does this. It's one thing to hear someone say it. It's another thing to be holding on to a joystick and your plane's wobbling in the air and you're trying to basically balance it out. And how do you balance it out? Use those surfaces on a plane. And you, we have the whole joystick configured for it. Um, the curriculum just has us flying normal Cessnas. The kids have learned that they can fly things from a Boeing 747 to a space shuttle. So the software is, and you can fly in different planets. You can fly off different cities. You can change the weather conditions and try to fly in different weather conditions and you can do flight paths. So we do all these things with flight. We will soon get to rockets and how rockets work and space propulsion. And then we'll do some stuff with Mars rovers. So, uh, we'll build Mars in another classroom and try to map it from our room without seeing it. And then they'll have to get one of our robots and use their programming skills from 10th grade to navigate Mars without ever actually setting foot.
Hmm, oh, cool.
So that's probably what we'll end.
Pretty cool.
Um, in terms of aerospace, I will say this, my favorite experience so far was, um, not part of the curriculum. Um, it was the day of the SpaceX launch. My friend works for SpaceX. He texted me, he's like, hey, we're launching today. Um, the Heavy Falcon, which was their new big rocket. Just so happened to fall on a day when we, we alternate schedules where I taught aerospace. But the launch was scheduled for 10:00 AM. That's not when I taught aerospace. But, um, it got delayed and the launch ended up happening exactly during aero, my aerospace class. So the kids were all,
How did you do that? Yeah.
Kids were all working and I kind of was like, hey, guys, I know you're, you know, kind of involved, but the rocket's about to launch. Um, the computers will be here in, in about three minutes. This rocket won't. And so as a class, it was great. We gathered around the, the screen and watched the SpaceX launch and then the, the two things. Um, I told my mom, like, is this what it was like when people landed on the moon and everyone gathered around the TV? Cause that's kind of what it was felt like. We were watching and we're like, whoa. Wait, how are those landing like that? Oh my God, it's still going. It's going so fast. Why is it doing that? Things like that. So that was a really awesome experience, like something that, I mean, if I was just teaching any other class, the excitement wouldn't have been there. But it's like, look, we're actually doing things like this. And so now when we get to the rocket, things like, hey, remember when we saw the SpaceX rocket do this? Well, that's what this is called on the rocket and stuff. So, very, very awesome. Um, besides all this cool stuff we do with the curriculum, we also have a bunch of things we're doing outside of class and the curriculum as well to offer things for kids. So I'll talk a little bit about the ACE Mentor Program in a second. Um, we have a really strong partnership right now with OCC. Um, I've taught a couple of summer classes with a college instructor. We co-teach it. Um, and it's for high school kids and it's like a summer camp. It's offered at a really affordable rate and the kids get to use all the OCC equipment and get, basically a college instructor teaches them. I'm kind of there more as a buffer and a helpful person for how do you handle teenagers for four hours? Cause you can't just lecture at them on it during summer. Uh, we've done numerous field trips because they're just walking distance and gotten tours of their labs. Vitalink is another nonprofit in our community that does a lot of stuff for us. We take field trips with them and they'll talk about that in a second. Um, we do their robotics competition and things like that. Um, both Karen and I have VEX teams that compete and we do some VEX competitions. And then we're this year, uh, doing something called the Solar Cup in partnership with our Environmental Marine Academy and our Digital Media Arts. And I'll get to that in a second. Um, but Vernice can talk, or Karen can talk about the middle school.
Uh, so for the middle school, we take a field trip over to OC Fairgrounds, uh, for Vitalink. Uh, and it's just exposing them to different fields of engineering. There's usually a guest speaker. Um, so it's really cool to just go across the street and see that. Um, last year, I was also able to get, um, a family friend to come into the classroom. He is currently a computer science, um, major at UCI. He works for a company called CodeSpeak. And so he came to our class and he showed our kids how to do some programming. So because my class is all CAD-based, just using Autodesk Inventor to design, I wanted to expose them to, to more computer science. So that was a really cool, um, exposure for them. Just being able to build an app by dragging things around and seeing how easy it is to actually code.
Um, so our school kind of already had ACE, uh, the ACE Mentor Program going, um, and it got passed on to me as the engineering teacher. But pretty much what it is, is it stands for Architecture, Construction and Engineering. So every Wednesday for, from 3:30 to 5:30, a group of architects, construction workers and engineers meet with a group of kids in my classroom and they walk them through a entire project from start to finish. I believe right now they're trying to redesign our school. Um, and they'll actually like create a little board. Um, and so the kids, I've heard them talking like, we should move the dome over here. We should do this. And they'll actually present it to a panel. Um, what's great about it is the kids get one-on-one help with, for, with a construction guy and architecture guy. It walks them through the whole process. Uh, we get to go on some pretty cool, they take them on some pretty cool field trips. They got to go see the, um, what's that dome? The planetarium that's being built at OCC in the middle of the construction phase. So put the hard hats on. We went off, um, off hours. Um, Karen and I tagged along because we were like, ooh, this sounds really cool. And it was, you got to see how the dome got constructed. So it's great. And there, there's kids who are part of this that aren't part of my engineering program. It's just kind of like an after-school thing. So, um, just to expose them to different careers. And then our Solar Cup. So this is a, Karen's on the Solar Cup team too here. Um, so what is the Solar Cup? So basically, uh, a group of kids, about 10, 11th, 10th and 11th graders. We went out to the Water District, I believe up in San Bernardino, and we built a boat one day out of wood. So it's like a canoe. It's 16 feet long and we built it from basically nothing, just some slabs of wood. The kids got to learn, you know, some boat terms that I don't recall right now and how everything fits together. So we got this really nice wood boat. We brought it back. Um, we learned relatively quickly that we didn't do a very good job of nailing things flush. So we got to spend a lot of time sanding stuff down and smoothing it out. Um, we were lucky enough to, uh, hook up with a local boat company called, called Coswell Boat Works. I think they're in like Santa Ana, Costa Mesa area. And they painted our boat for us. So that one picture of like the green, they did an interior and a nice marine paint. It looks great. Uh, right now, we are in the process of putting the stuff in the boat. So it's not just a canoe race. So we will race this boat against other schools in Southern California. It's a, it'll have a propeller, a motor and be run on batteries and solar panels. We have two races. We do an endurance race, an hour and a half. And then we do a sprint race for 30 seconds. Um, as a, as a rookie team, uh, we got sponsored by our Water District here, uh, for $4,000. So that's where the money came from. But I mean, yeah, learned a lot about boats recently. Didn't think that would ever happen. It's been great for the kids too. We're learning how, you know, different gears will affect it. Hill Marine, which is also another local company, um, they are building us specific propellers for our boat to give us a little bit of an advantage um, with it. And all that will basically get put in the boat and hopefully we'll have a working boat in a couple of weeks.
When do you race?
We race in May. So it's a 17th through the 20th. Um, so yeah, we go out to a lake, we qualify, and then we also have competitive races with it. But yeah.
Wow.
It's great for the kids. So definitely outside of our,
Doesn't hurt the teachers to be excited either.
Um, and so I actually brought some students with me who have been with the program. Um, so I'm going to introduce them. So first we have Alyssa LaCour.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alyssa LaCour. I have been in the engineering program since ninth grade. I actually got in by accident. Eighth grade year, like every eighth grade girl, I wanted to be a marine biologist. So I signed up for, um, the environmental science class. Fortunately, I did not get in and instead I was put in the engineering course. And I have to say, it's been a lot of fun. I didn't think I would like it, but, um, I've continued to enjoy it and it's been one of my favorite classes for the past three years. Um, being one of the few girls in it, it has been a challenge trying to kind of figure out where I fit in. So far, I've been one of four girls every year that's been in the, excuse me, has been in the class. Um, as you can see in this picture, um, the, the, my Santa jaws is something I designed for our door project. Um, we designed a beach-themed door. So I thought it would be fun to put in a little pun in there with my, uh, Santa jaws. And then next to that, you can see, we have built gliders this year. We actually got to test them and fly them. Um, and this was one of my first experiences actually trying to sand something. That was, uh, it was very interesting. So yeah, this is also, like they mentioned before, this teaches us a lot of life skills. Um, so yeah, and I've really enjoyed using the Inventor and trying to figure things out. And I went into this class not knowing anything about engineering, the design process, any of that. And then I got there and slowly, um, we've kind of figured it out together. Thank you.
Alyssa, Alyssa, um, so are you a junior or a sophomore?
I'm a junior. So this is my third year.
So, um, do you have any, um, idea what you want to do as you go forward?
Um, I actually went on a college tour today and they started asking us that. I'm pretty sure I want to major in engineering. I'm just not quite sure what field yet.
Okay. Well, it's a big field, like, like your teacher said. So, and if you'd have gotten into the environmental class, you maybe wouldn't be doing that, right?
No, um, I actually found out last year, taking AP Biology, that that is not my strong.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hong Nguyen. I am also a junior at Costa Mesa High School and I aspire to be a mechanical engineer. And I was also in Alyssa's team for this door project and I built our city for, it was supposed to be our Walt Disney City. And then as part of our aerospace curriculum, we also built an airplane. And what I really love about this program is our evolution of learning where when I just joined last year, all I had was a breadboard and some wires. And Ms. Cross gave us a solar panel. And eventually we were able to build a solar panel car. And we even used a lamp and it, and it worked. And we were like, wow, let's take it outside. And then we realized it was raining. So, and then we proceeded to pneumatic, uh, pneumatics and hydraulics and all kinds of different materials. And we learned how each different material has different tensions and strengths. And we realized why we shouldn't build our planes out of plastic or out of balsa wood. And in aerospace, we started with paper machine, uh, paper planes. And we just threw them, they just broke. And then we finally went on to gliders. And I, mine actually did an acrobat, mine was an acrobatic glider and it did five loops in the air. And it lasted nine seconds. And that was really cool because we applied all the things we learned, like Bernoulli's law and how the wings on an airplane can affect its motion. And we took that to the maximum level where we all flew our planes and then everybody was going out of whack. And we're like, hey, if we changed surfaces, like Ms. Cross said and paid attention, then our plane actually went well. And it was a really cool experience. And then in our programming class, our knowledge, the things we learn are so ubiquitous that if I went, I went on to proceed in my technical training and I took ROP classes, like engineering innovation and programming and robotics. And right when I joined, it was every, I already knew all of it because we already learned it at school. I already knew how to use RobotC, Inventors and SolidWorks. It was just a matter of adapting. And there's so many resources that we can draw on. We have a laser cutter. We have 3D things. We have wind, wind tunnels. And we can use our analysis and we see that everything here is industry-based. So we can use things like people in real-world wood and we would just be on the same playing field.
Are you a senior?
I'm a junior.
You're a junior too. Okay.
Not yet.
That's right. You don't. Next year, you'll both be in. And you want to be a mechanical engineer at MIT.
Yes, MIT.
You've learned resilience and perseverance, two life skills that will carry you forever. Because you build something and it doesn't work and you can't stop because you've got to make it work. So good. That's so exciting.
We learned about the use of emergency saw.
Good to know. That's so exciting.
All right. So there you have it. Anybody we ever talk to who comes by and sees us, uh, students working and comes to these classes, uh, the response is always the same. I wish I could go back to middle or high school and I go to these classes. Really do some awesome things. Testimony to the teachers and the students. Really, really fun. So thank you for your support. Uh, as I mentioned in the beginning, we are booming. So thank you.
No, thank you.
Wow.
Mrs. Yelsey.
Yeah, I just, Dr. Haley, Mr.
Yeah, I just, Dr. Haley, Ms. Pedia, and I have never seen a program where the teachers and the kids are so excited about what they're doing, and you guys as well. And I know you've been there from the beginning, Jake, and it's amazing what you've built over there. And I think it probably makes us all want to be in the classroom, and it really is very exciting. But it's really so awe-inspiring to see how excited everyone is over this.
So cool. Exactly. I like the connection, the connection between these classes and basic academics. The connection makes it so much more engaging, as you can see. And you have to have the staff that is excited about teaching it, and you certainly do that. You have that. Good job, ladies.
The, "Uh-huh. Oh, we learned that in Math 1. Oh, that's why you made us learn that." Yeah.
It's great.
It's wonderful.
It's great.
Thank you.
Any more comments up here?
Yay, Mesa.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We enjoyed that.
Lovely.
Okay, moving on to community input.
Speaker, cards for items on the discussion action calendar will be held until that item is considered by the board. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on consent calendar, agenda items, or on non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Per Board Policy 9323, each speaker will have three minutes to cover one or multiple topics, and speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers. And there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. The board staff or members of the public may request that a specific item on consent be moved to the discussion action. Requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the board takes action on the consent calendars. Depending on the nature of the comments, the board president or superintendent may respond, or the president may call upon board members for brief comments, questions of clarification, provide a reference to staff, or other resources for factual information, or request the superintendent to report back to the board at a subsequent meeting concerning the matter. However, in compliance with Board Policy and the Ralph Van Brown Act, the board is not permitted to take action on non-agenda items. Any board member or member of the public may request that an item within the jurisdiction of the board be placed on the agenda of a regular meeting by submission of Board Policy 9322 Agenda Request Form to the superintendent. When a request is made during a public meeting, all verbal requests must be followed up with the submission of Board Policy, Board Bylaw 9322 Agenda Request Form to the superintendent. Any individual with a disability who requires reasonable accommodation to participate in a board meeting may request assistance by contacting the superintendent's office at 2985 A Bear Street, Costa Mesa, California 92626, phone number 714-424-5031, or fax number 714-424-5018. Notification not later than noon on the day preceding the board meeting will enable the district to make reasonable arrangements to assure accessibility to this meeting. When addressing the board, it is helpful if you state your name and address for the record. All comments are recorded in full on the board meeting video record. DVD copies of the complete meeting are available to check out from the superintendent's office for three days or purchase for $1.
Are you done?
For the record.
For the record. Okay. We'll start with Britt Doughty.
So, good evening, President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, members of the cabinet, members of the community. I'm Britt Doughty. I'm president of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers, Local 1794. And hearing the presentation tonight by these wonderful kids and teachers at Project Lead the Way really reminded me of a conscious choice I made three years ago that was pretty painful for me. And at that time, T-Winkle was starting the Project Lead the Way. And you guys may not know, but I'm a rambling wreck from Georgia Tech and a heck of an engineer. And it was my dream to teach a course like that. I'd been waiting a decade or more to teach something like that. And I consciously stepped away from that, because members of our union were asking me to step up and assume a larger leadership role. So it's really with a heavy heart that I come before you again, asking for your help. And so first off, I want to remind everyone that it's not my voice that's here. I'm speaking on behalf of our members. And so when I come to you, it's because our members are asking me to take action on items. My voice represents 1,210 employees throughout this district. Those are teachers, counselors, librarians, speech-language pathologists, nurses, social workers, audiologists, and program specialists. So I'll refer to them as educators, because it's not just teachers. At our last school board meeting, another one of our officers and myself spoke to you about concerns that we felt and that we'd heard from our members about things that we needed and that employees had some serious safety concerns. And we were hoping to hear from the board something like, "We'll follow up on that. We'll get back to you." Or, "Hey, we'll take some action." Or, "Hey, what do you think?" But members who were in the audience watching and members at home that were watching on TV let me know that they felt like we were being dismissed as a union. They felt like our voice wasn't being heard. So tonight, NMFT has representatives from 20 of the 32 schools present tonight. These persons probably holding up their signs. If you add it all up, they represent more than 750 educators throughout the districts. They have concerns. We're wanting to work together. We're wanting to get these issues and concerns resolved. Listen to us. Take some leadership on this. Engage with NMFT, and help us find solutions to have a better environment for students.
Betsy Fisher.
Can you hear me? These guys are going to pass something out to you, so can we pause the timer until you get it? It's a little handout.
Sure.
Thank you. Appreciate that. My name is Betsy Fisher. I'm a resident of Costa Mesa. I'm the mother of two Newport Mesa graduates, and I'm an English teacher at Newport Harbor. I honestly know that what I have to say tonight is not an isolated opinion. After many discussions with my colleagues, I know both in my heart and in my head that what I have to say about safety represents not just the vast majority of educators and counselors on my campus, but the parents that live in my own neighborhood. I am in a unique position, unique and sometimes terrifying position. I know how it feels to send my own children off to school and worry about their safety. And I know what the experience is to be on a campus with my colleagues and my students and be concerned about my safety. I could very easily list many specific examples of what are clearly breaches in security on my campus. For example, the fact that the English buildings, several rooms have glass walls, glass walls that provide no protection from the eye of an armed intruder. Some of the rooms have sheet metal walls that despite their solid appearance are about as strong as a corrugated bucket. This is not what I have come here to say. The greatest deterrent to violence and tragedy at our schools is not, in my opinion, about the physical surroundings, or the arming of the teachers, or laws for or against guns. The most powerful way to protect our students from outsiders, from their peers, and unfortunately, from themselves, is the ability to recognize when they're in trouble, to have their trust so they will come to me with their problems, or come to me with their insight about the troubles of their peers, or God forbid, that they would come to me when they know about a very dangerous situation. The most important thing is to know my students, to truly understand like why they are late, because they have to take younger kids to school, to understand why they haven't done their reading. They work a job at night. They live with an alcoholic. They were dumped by a boyfriend or a girlfriend. They're struggling with any manner of problems, depression, drug use, sexual identity, bullying, hunger, and the list goes on. Look at the pictures on the packets I have made for you. These are my kids. These seating charts are representative of all teachers at the secondary level. They are names, and they are faces. They're called a caseload. That's what it's called. The caseload for all secondary teachers is 180 kids. This is not a caseload. These are individual people. They're people with names. They're people with personalities. They're people with good days and bad days and troubles and all aspects of being human. To be honest with you, sometimes we don't know all of their names by December, and sometimes we don't know all of their names.
I'm sorry. I'm going to have to stop you. We have so many speakers tonight. But I thank you for your comments. We appreciate, I really appreciate your comments. Thank you. Okay, Sarah.
I would like to say something and not get kicked out. Please let me finish.
I'm sorry. You're out of order. I have so many cards and...
As an English teacher, I know that my colleagues agree with me. We know the power of writing. The time permitting, we will not get to know our kids.
I apologize, but you know, if you can go over a minute, other people can go over a minute. It's not fair that one person gets to go over.
I'm so sorry that you don't care.
I care. And you know what? I would, if you would like to put that in an email, and we'll send it to everybody on the board.
I'm so sorry that you don't care. Thank you.
No, you don't have to leave.
Oh, I thought they got kicked out.
No, you don't have to leave.
She's done. You didn't let her finish. Thank you.
Good evening. I know Betsy. She's a great teacher, and it's too bad that she didn't get to finish her sentiment, because it's nice for everybody to hear. An email just doesn't quite get the message across. My name is Paula Gibbons, and I'm representing Ensign and NMFT. At our school, we have 44 classrooms, and eight of them have air conditioning. So I'm here to address the heat problem and the heat plan that does not exist. So with only eight classrooms with air conditioning, you can't rotate other classes in and out during an extreme heat day. So we need a plan. If it's not written down, it's not a plan, and we don't have one. We don't have one. Harbor High School doesn't have one. Costa Mesa High School doesn't have one. Mariners doesn't have one, and I would bet many, many other schools in the district don't have one. So I'm asking that we write something down. We make a plan. What are we going to do when temperatures in the classroom are 95 degrees? And that has happened. We've been asking for a plan for about two and a half years. So it doesn't seem like it's a difficult thing to achieve. Our students need it. Teachers need it. So we would like to see a specific plan on what do we do when you have 95 degrees in a classroom. Let's see. The policy that I was giving, given about the heat plan was really, wasn't written for teachers, it wasn't written for schools, it was written for workers, and that's what they call, that's what it says in the plan, if workers need to adjust their time, their day, which we know that we can't do. But the best, this is a quote from the plan that was given to me, "The best way to make the work environment cooler is air conditioning." Dot. So I know that we're working on that, but it's going to be, there's going to be some schools that are two years away from having air conditioning, so we need to have something written down. One other thing that I wanted to say is about lockdown drills. And we have a code, and I don't know if you know this, to do an all-call, if there's a lockdown drill, that we have to punch into the phones. It's a nine-digit code. So I don't know about you, but I know if I hear guns and shots fired, it's going to be very difficult to punch in a nine-digit code. So it would be nice if we came up with a better plan than that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sarah, and I believe it's Ann Water.
Good evening, President Snell, members of the board, and Dr. Navarro and community members. My name is Sarah Allwater. I'm an elementary teacher for the district and vice president of NMFT for elementary education. During recent board meetings, the district approved comprehensive safety plans, but there's evidence that the plans are not comprehensive enough to meet the safety needs at all school sites consistently. For instance, at California Elementary, there was an incident that caused much fear, immense fear for many, on more than one occasion, where someone was, a parent was violating the civility code. And while every incident is unique, there's protocols that should be in place and written and implemented at every school. The incident did expose several gaps in the school and district safety plan. For example, which administrator is the backup if a principal is off-campus for meetings? How do you communicate to the staff when the preference is to not make a loud announcement on the PA and things of that nature? At College Park, another thing happened where the power was off at 3:00 a.m., and there was not a clear process to communicate with staff, warning, I believe it was 3:00 a.m. I'm not certain about that, but I believe it was. There was not a process to communicate with the staff, warning them about the absence of electricity, heat, perhaps fire alarms, nor a list of staff telephone numbers that could be used as a phone tree when the PA phones and phones weren't working. Now, most teachers know what the school's fire evacuation, earthquake, and intruder plans are, because it is written and practiced regularly. However, there needs to be a clear protocol to follow when a threat exists on campuses, or how to deal with a crisis or a threat when the administrators are not on campus. I realize, we realize, some schools do have well-implemented plants, written plants, and that they exist, but others don't have them in evidence. And we need your leadership to set policies to determine what should go into a school's safety plan to meet the current needs in climate and education today, to meet today's safety needs on school campuses. We need your leadership to help with this, please, and policies about that, and training. And... Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tamara Fairbanks.
Hello, board. Wonderful guests at the community. I come here before you, just speaking on behalf of my colleagues about school safety and the need for leadership, written policies, and things of that nature. One of the biggest issues that we have within our district is that there's an inconsistency. Some school sites are doing exceptionally well, actually have written down protocols. Others do not. And as a teacher who has actually taught in a classroom, well, in a non-classroom, in a multipurpose room, one of, one of the biggest safety issues I used to endure constantly living in a multipurpose room is that there was no PA system. One day, we had a lockdown. There was a highway pursuit coming off of the 73 freeway on Tower Irvine Avenue, and all I heard was the fire alarms. I heard the sirens. I heard the helicopters. And the PA system, over the PA system, I heard an announce, there was an announcement over the PA system. I could not hear it. I sat in my classroom for about 10 minutes. I sat in my classroom for about 10 minutes before the generator ran in and closed the door. This is a huge security gap. What if I was in there with my kindergarten students? What is I, what if there was a gunman on campus entering the classroom? It's right in the front of the school. You're exposed. One of the biggest things that we need to think about is, teacher's safety is the same as student's safety. And so when I come to my workplace, I want to feel safe. And when I feel safe, I can keep the students safe and I feel proud about that safety. So when things are written, are written down, when there is, even with our procedures, we ask, we do have our drills, but what happens when there's someone hostile on campus? What is that protocol? What is that policy? It's not clearly displayed and no one knows what to do, not as an employee, not as a student, not as a parent, not as a volunteer. And so what we're asking you to do is just to listen to our community, listen to our colleagues, listen to our students, and really hear the need of, what are these policies that we need written down? What are these policies that we can refer to in the district website? Not just on the district website, but in writing that is clear, that's displayed, that's consistent, no matter where I go, whether that is at Mariners or at Newport Heights or Pomona, I can actually know exactly what to do, no matter what school place I'm at. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bob Kelly. And after Bob Kelly is Garth Anderson, so you can, you know.
Good evening, President Snell, members of the Board, Dr. Navarro, members of the community. My name is Bob Kelly. I live at 327B Ogiloe Street, Costa Mesa. I'm a retired teacher and I represent Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers Retired. I also represent the soul of your educators. I have 41 experience in the classroom in Newport Mesa. I have been Newport Heights Elementary Teacher of the Year, the Newport Mesa Elementary Teacher of the Year, and a finalist in the Orange County Teacher of the Year. Even though I have been retired for almost seven years, I currently serve as a volunteer in classrooms five days a week. I have experienced many ups and downs in the Newport Mesa history. I have seen morale in the teaching community go up and down as well. I'm currently seeing one of the lowest overall morale problems in my observation, that's 48 years almost of experience. Since I still have grandchildren going to schools and a daughter working in special ed, this is very upsetting to me. I worked as a teacher union representative for too many years to see this district sliding downhill yet again. So how does this situation get turned around? In the past, this has happened only through direct public action by the union and the parental community. I hope you don't ignore these teachers who have come before you tonight. As the country's students said this weekend, they have had enough. Enough of growing classes, enough of inadequate supplies and training to deliver a 21st century education, enough of poor curriculum choices, enough of expensive benefits, enough of poor safety procedures and conditions, and enough of poor, I'm sorry to say, overpaid leadership. I hope you take action to correct these, this district's directions and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Okay, Garth Anderson. And after Garth is Karen Blanchard. Is Garth, maybe Garth stepped out. So we'll move on to Karen Blanchard.
My name is Karen Blanchard. I have a first, a third, and a sixth grade student at California Elementary School. I chose to be a part of tonight's board meeting because after seven years at California School, I, for the first time, have experienced fear and anxiety by sending my children to school. On February 7th, one week before the Florida campus shooting, I was aware, made aware of a parent, heard and seen yelling and being disruptive while being escorted by our office, by the principal. While at the office behind closed doors, this parent continued to be extremely loud and enraged. On that Friday, a district employee was on campus and there was a feeling of anxiety that I had not seen before by our staff. Since this date, I have not seen a highly respected teacher that this parent was escorted from. I inquired a staff in the front office and I was told that she was just out. Don't worry, she's not sick and her family is fine. Three weeks later, passing a fellow third grade student told me, a fellow third grade parent told me that she heard that our teacher was out from some disciplinary action because she tore students' drawing in front of the class and keeping students in a recess because of reading. I notified my teacher that there was these rumors going around and experienced a very brief, uncomfortable exchange that I have never had before, almost as if she was unsure of what to say and almost had no desire to lie about it. On March 9th, I became aware of an, of an email circulating, circulating from a room parent that suggested on February 7th incident on campus may be the reason for our respected teacher's absence. That the parent may have been yelling and intimidating her. When I asked the office staff, the response was, "This campus is safe. There is no concerns for your safety." However, that day, while the principal was absent, California School had the Adams School Principal and a Teen Winkle Security Officer on campus. That is not normal, never has been, and it seems to be in action, in direct contradiction to the, there being no concern. On March 22nd, I was volunteering on campus while six officers were keeping a same parent from moving past the office. While I saw the police officers and a plethora of district employees that are in this room, I did not see my regular staff to ask what was going on. Once I signed in on campus, two officers remaining in the front office, I was extremely nervous and I expressed that to the office staff. When I made it to my child's room, I was shocked and extremely concerned that it, my own child's room, this teacher had no idea that there was police presence on campus. She explained that she was in a school-wide meeting with HR and multiple other non-California staff and was only let out at the bell to collect the students and had no idea that there may be a problem on campus. I felt blessed to be on campus that day, to not have to call from home because I had concerns about police presence and being told that it was standard procedure. Never was a regular day at California started with a half dozen random district employees and three Costa Mesa police squad cars. There cannot be a level of zero communication in our school. In order to install confidence and leadership of the school, communication needs to occur right away and not after repeated requests by parents.
I'm sorry.
Communication needs to be proactive, not reactive.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have somebody else speaking, I think, on the same, very same thing. So at the end, we'll reply to some of this. Jennifer Pacino. Pacino? Oh, there you go.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Pacino. Sorry, I'm lack of experience here. I also have three children over at California Elementary, first, third, and sixth. My student is also involved in the classroom that this situation has taken place. And mine is more of a comment, and I know we'll address everything later. My son suffers from anxiety.
That's okay, stop the clock. Stop. It's okay. Do you wanna take a minute? We'll, we'll start your time over. No? Okay.
A week and a half ago, my son had a complete meltdown and an anxiety attack. It's happened before. Thank God for Ms. Robb for being there. She knows the history with him. I did not know if I had to take him to the hospital lot. He is completely in utter shock with dealing, thank you, with the stress at the school and the changing of the substitute teachers for the past possible month. My kids do not wanna go to school, especially him, because of the substitute teachers. They have, he does not get any stabilization there. I don't even know if he's getting the right academics. And for my child to be this scared to go to school and being told that they just got locked down again the other day and we weren't informed, I was told that it is just simply, everything's fine, we're taking care of it. There was no email, there was no phone call, there was no notification whatsoever in regards to what happened in my son's classroom. My kindergartner was in the bathroom and had to make her way back to class and was locked out because she didn't know they were in a lockdown. It's just, there needs to be some kind of communication, there needs to be some kind of safety going on. And when you have these children who have these disabilities, we have another child in the class that has autism. And it's just, no one's, I'm sorry, but just no one's communicating with us at all. I find out what happened in my kid's class by an email? And to this day, even when I asked the principal, it was just, "Don't worry about it, we're taking care of it." I don't see anything's being done. And then when we're told we're getting a regular substitute and then the very next day, we get a new one again. This is not healthy for my son. It's to the point, do I need to leave this school and go somewhere else? But that's gonna cause more anxiety with my child. But something needs to be done, especially with even the teachers in the safety, not only the children, but just everybody in general. So, and that's it. I just think you guys really need to hear that, whether you have children who suffer from something or not. At any moment, it can be your family. You could be in the grocery store and have somewhere to come in, and next thing you know, it's you. I mean, we gotta get our shit together, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Jennifer? I, I'm also gonna suggest that you talk with Student Services for if you need any help with your son and adjusting.
He just says he doesn't wanna go to school anymore because of quote-unquote all this stuff. He can't get a teacher.
Okay. Well, maybe Dr. Phil can, if you wanna talk to Dr. Phil after. Yeah. Okay. Um... Does Garth Anderson come in? I, I can't read the first name. Last name is Hartley. Mr. Hart, no. Miss Hartley. Sorry, I looked over at Dr. Phil.
Hi, my name is Jane Hartley. I'm a Costa Mesa site rep. We have almost 100 bargaining unit, uh, members on our site. I'm also the COPE Chair and I work on campus regularly. I am told anecdotally that you guys think you have support from the teachers. You don't. We're not happy with the Board. We're very, very, very unhappy. You don't listen to our leaders. We have, just at Costa Mesa, a rat grievance, a heat grievance, and a science lab grievance. The science labs are dangerous. The rats and, and the heats are dangerous. And you just don't listen to our leadership. I don't know who you are listening to. I talk to our students and our classified members as well as our certificated members. I have yet to hear from one person who thinks that Costa Mesa is a safe campus. Not one. And it is not the fault of our administrators. We don't have enough of them to start with. It is not the fault of our security guards. We don't have enough. If you look at the numbers of, of Teen Winkle plus Estancia, they have an extra or two administrators. They have an extra security guard. If you look at our numbers and you combine the Costa Mesa Middle School and the Costa Mesa High School, we have the same number of students. We only have four administrators and three security guards. And by the way, you built the enclave and added a huge extra percentage to our campus. They can't do it. One of our workers walked the campus and counted 28 access points. 28. They are not secure. You know what you've done in the last two weeks? There was a gate in the enclave where you could actually reach your hand in and push the push bar and get in that way. And don't think everybody didn't know it. You've blocked that off. So there's one that's a little bit safer. We're not safe. We are unable to lock down under any circumstances. Hide is the best answer. After Newtown, I lost tears and I lost sleep and I talked with a friend of mine with military experience. I now have five fire extinguishers in my classroom because I figured out that's the best weapon. I have talked to teachers who don't have a single fire extinguisher. They're not even up to code. It's a problem. You know what you can do with a fire extinguisher? You can spray somebody in the face with it. Apparently, it sucks the oxygen out and leaves them breathing CO2, which is choking. You can hit them in the head. Why don't we all have five fire extinguishers? We need ways to protect ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Did Garth Anderson come back? Okay.
Good evening, President Snell, Vice President Matoye, Distinguished Trustees, and Superintendent Navarro. I'm speaking at the behest of Dr. Doughty, President of your Union of Teachers. My name is Dennis Ashendorf. I teach at Back Bay. During the summer of 1979, while working at IBM, the most significant corporation in the world at the time, I addressed a production line stopped simply on the worry of one worker. The factory stayed down until I resolved the problem. Initially, I thought the overreaction was silly, but I was wrong. Safety first identifies taking shortcuts. In the 1980s, unions within Japanese manufacturers were weak, except intentionally on safety issues. Staff rushed to fix safety concerns. Otherwise, workers would lose trust in management. Low morale, low morale and disengaged workers don't signify successful companies. My Anglo friends working in Malaysia were chastised for not dealing with the safety issue intelligently. Their semiconductor factory was haunted. Employees stopped working. Only after an HR director called in the local shaman did work return to normal. That's a safety problem. Management is supposed to solve problems, not take stands of superiority, whether valid or not. In 1987 through 1999, Paul O'Neill helmed Elkoa. From the first day, he made safety job one. Within a few years, foundry floors pouring molten aluminum were safer than the room we're in now. He improved the company's value 800% during his tenure. He used safety as a way to get the company together and solve problems together. In the months after the last school board election, I briefly served on NMFT's Board. Our President, Dr. Doughty, spoke of the need to work with the administration on something that would provide a win-win for all. He clearly said that fixing a few safety issues would benefit all of us and be welcomed by the administration, showing unity of purpose. Didn't happen. As a former specialist in Japanese manufacturing systems, I sat dovefounded every two weeks as Dr. Doughty would repeatedly state that he didn't want to escalate the safety concerns, just quietly solve them. But he only met silence. Tonight, like your last meeting, my union is here on safety. Crazy. You should never, ever hear a complaint on safety. You should only hear happy news on days without incident. To be fair, safety isn't a topic taught administrative credentially. Yes, we have fire drills, intruder drills, and concerns over bullets, but they feel like an R&amp;R activity, a requirement often. We must get stronger in solving non-routine problems together, like the students in tonight's PLTW program. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Smith.
Thank you, Mrs. Snell. Good evening, everyone. One week ago, the Orange County Register ran the second in a series of articles about teen suicide. In this one, there are pictures of Patrick Turner, quotes from his family, quotes from his letters, which are now widely available online. The author of the series, David Whiting, wrote, quote, "Patrick's mother wishes her son talked about what was bothering him, but he didn't now, didn't, and now he never can," unquote. It is possible that stigma is one reason why Patrick Turner did not talk about his troubles. The scolding of a parent at the March 2nd board meeting and the district's apparent desire to sweep Patrick Turner's suicide under the rug is undermining the efforts of Student Services and perpetuating the air of stigma attached to counseling. This is not the prom draft. This is not the premature draining of a pool and it is not a falsified gold ribbon application. By not encouraging an open and frank discussion of this challenge, you have told parents and students in this district that mental health issues are not something to be discussed by- Instead, your lack of response may be doing tremendous damage to the approximately 2,200 students in the district who are estimated to be candidates for mental health counseling, but who are now receiving messages that to them are the equivalent of, "Get over it." And that's the real shame here.
Thank you. Terry Kurzen? I can't hear you. Terry Kurzen?
Terry?
Terry, K-U-R-Z-E-N. Maybe she stepped out. Kelly Anderson. Stephanie Struther. Stephanie?
It's my wife.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, President Snell, members of the board, superintendent, cabinet. I'm a parent of two children at elementary, at California Elementary School, and I come before you because of the situation that's been brought up a couple times, and we believe it's really inhibiting the education and questioning the safety at our school. Many concerned parents have been trying to get information from site staff for almost two months, and we just get canned responses, no information, no transparency, no communication. We come here for information and action plan, something. We've lost our teacher. My daughter goes to school and says it's like roulette with substitutes. It's like having a different superintendent every day, right? You get no cohesion, no ability to carry on a valid course. We haven't had our conferences, parent-teacher conferences, so we have no idea where our kids have been throughout the year and where they need to be. There was a situation where allegedly a student drew a picture, drew a drawing of himself harming the teacher. The teacher confiscated it, and as, by law and as a mandated reporter, that's her duty to do such an act. And at a later morning, the parent came back to the site to get that drawing and caused a big scene. And now we have it where the parent of that student doesn't want that student in the class with the teacher, and the teacher won't come back to the school until she's assured that the student will not be coming back. So this is taking months. There's a lot more information out there that is possibly gossip hearsay alleged, but when we go to our principal and say, "What's going on? Tell us, we can handle it, we're big kids. If there's a problem, let's fix it, let's come up with a resolution." The student's already been in three different schools, and it's only third grade, so there's something going on. I'm not a licensed registered psychologist, I can't evaluate students' mental health, but I feel like in this day and age, we can't be too overly cautious with school shooters, things that go on when we hear about kids that are disturbed or activity that is concerning when your students are in that class, and especially when you have multiple kids at that school. You can't underestimate these children nowadays, you just can't. You do it once, and that's it, then you don't have children. So, I ask that someone step up and get the parents' information and an action plan and transparency and truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Lance Urata?
Good evening, my name's Lance Urata, 3164 Gibraltar Avenue. I also, California school parent. I'm actually very surprised to see all this union stuff and everything going on tonight, I had no idea. But I am here as a concerned parent, a nervous parent. I learned about this incident only recently, Friday night, or I think Thursday, after the police presence and the highly non-standard officials' presence and the disappearing of our normal presence early in the morning. Red flag, parent, that's not cool, I gotta know what's going on. Couldn't get any answers, just, "We're fine, everything's cool." We're hearing all kinds of things, gossip, rumor, I'm sure. As a parent, the worst thing I hear is my assumption that's the truth. It has to be that way. So I have three daughters, two at California school. And I went to California, Teen Winkle, Estancia. I don't remember anything like this happening in the past. Maybe communication was a little better if something like this did happen in the past. But I hope there's no safety issue, we're being told there's no safety issue, but that's not my perception. Too many other teachers and parents are nervous, and we're just being told, "Sit tight, we're fine, don't worry." Well, I don't know how you can convince us there's no safety issue with, at the same time, protecting privacy rights. I know that's not easy, that's gotta be very tough. Teacher's privacy, parent's privacy, child's privacy, it's impossible. There's gotta be some compromise. I don't know how we can, I wish I had three or four ideas already to present. Maybe a safety council, similar to site council, as a parent and teacher and administrator. Maybe we get together, create those councils. My instinct was, well, let me go look into the site safety plan. So yesterday afternoon, I asked about that and was told, "You can make an appointment, come in and take a look at it." I will do that, haven't had a chance to, so I cannot render an opinion yet. Is it valid, is it not valid? Dr. Navarro, your recent email post-Florida mentioned there is a plan to review all those. I would hope there's strong parent involvement in that. I mean, there needs to be, because right now, I'm nervous. I don't know what to do about it. Show up every day, keep my eyes open? How do I, I don't know how to deal with this. So I would encourage you all, come up with a plan, work with us, parents, I'm ready. I know a lot of you, right? I'm ready to jump in. But let's figure it out, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Erica Roberts. Erica Roberts.
Can I pass something to the board?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Martha, I'd like you to have it, and you can give it to who you think is meeting of it. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board and community. My name is Erica Roberts. I am a mom of four young children in this district. I'm a teacher, a business owner, and I volunteer many hours at my beloved school, and I love my teachers. I sit on school site council and our foundation. Tonight, I was going to come to talk to you about communication, and I'm so pleased to see so many teachers here, actually, giving information to you, because I know that information is powerful, and you need to see these teachers to know that sometimes the information you're getting is not actually what we're experiencing. We got this email today called Healthy Communication. So this was kind of the path I wanted to discuss things with you about. Dr. Navarro, on the website, you have the Board Meeting Brief, but nowhere on the brief does it discuss, and I guess because it's not on the agenda, but math pilots, security, things that people are really interested in. So if you take a look at this, I would love to see this being sent out to parents with actual information that we have a desire to know about. Let me go back to my point. The community wants healthy communication, as you can see from all the speakers tonight. Examples, I brought up the Board Meeting Brief. Another important thing that we have not been discussing is the math pilot for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. In fact, it's gotten very little attention, quite opposite to the pilot from last year. Many people don't know who Suzanne Sence is, and a board member and I actually had a nice conversation and couldn't agree on who she was. So I'm pretty active, and I know she's very active, so if we can't understand who she is, how in the world are parents and community members supposed to know who she is? So she is the person who sent out information about the math pilot last year, she's John Drake's secretary. She's the person who sends out these emails that also says, "Click on the icon if you want to know more about the math board." When you click on the icon, it doesn't work. It's not live, it is not active. So this information to parents is pretty terrible. Then we have the LCAP. I put a lot of time into understanding the LCAP. I know there's a lot of work that goes involved into it. I basically consider it a report card on the district, and parents should have an active say in that. Again, Suzanne Sence sent out the Hanover survey. Hanover's the company you hired at $60,000 to get information from us. You are not going to get information from parents if Suzanne Sence is sending it. Best practices, send it out from principals, PTA presidents, people that parents trust, and you will get those surveys back. Otherwise, expect a big delete. We are all asking for secure schools, information that parents can understand. Listen to us, listen to the teachers, these are the people that you say you care about so much. I invite you, Dana, to come to my school, and please just walk around with me after school and talk to some parents, just an informal talk, and see what they know. What you are being told is not what is happening. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is San Vu.
Good morning, sorry, it's my first time speaking here, and my name is San Vu, and I have a parent, I'm a parent of two children in California, one in the classroom that a lot of other parents have been speaking about, and the other was in kindergarten. I am the room mom in both classes, and I've been volunteering since September in kindergarten twice a week. And the last time that I was volunteering, I saw some faces there who are, "See here?" And I saw them for the first time last week, and I thought, "That's odd." And then I walked out after that day, and I see six officers, and I'm thinking, "Okay, something's going on." So I go back in, and I ask them, and they tell me, "This is standard procedure." Not once during the time that I've been at California had I seen six officers, and then they tell me it's standard procedure. So I reasonably ask, "Does this have anything to do with my child's third-grade class?" And I'm told, "No." And then I see the parent of the child, and I feel very, I'm angry, I'm frustrated, and I'm not being told the truth, because clearly, there's a link there, and I told my face, "It has nothing to do with that." As an attorney, I understand privacy and confidentiality. I am asking for a plan, I'm asking for a consistent sub, and I don't get that information until the day before. We had conferences of the week of three, of March 12th, we got an email on March 9th, canceling those conferences, when I had asked repeatedly, practically every day, "What's happening, what's happening, what's happening?" So I could give communication, because I felt as room mom, I know I'm speaking fast, that I should give information. So we get phone calls when there's a fundraiser, but we couldn't get a phone call on what is going here now? That is ridiculous! I'm so angry about it! I did not think I could be this emotional! We are losing faith and trust in our leadership at the school. We don't want that to happen. And I'm sure you guys don't want that to happen, but there is such zero communication, there cannot be zero communication. There can be low levels of communication for low incidences, and medium and high, like they do have at, on a national level, but this zero level of communication and blatantly telling me something that I can see is happening is not happening, makes me very angry, because I am not stupid. And my fellow parents are not stupid. And having six officers randomly show up is not standard operating procedure. And I called Student Services to get an answer if that is standard operating procedure, and I did not get a phone call back from them, and that even made me more angry. So there's very little communication, and we are very frustrated. And, I need a breather, sorry. I get Jennifer's emotion now. But my child is also, he comes home, he's like, "We didn't do anything, we had another sub," and he's frustrated, and I don't want to send him back to school either. And I'm so glad I made it back to this meeting today, but I needed to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think one of our parents, the gentleman who stood up, hit the nail on the head. There has to be a balance between privacy rights of parents and students and employees and what we can share with the public. We're held to a very high standard with regard to that, you know, there's a contradiction there that we have to deal with. I do want to start at the beginning with these safety plans. They do start at the school site councils. You don't have to have a safety committee, school site council is a safety committee. They review the safety plan every year with the principals, any changes, any additions, and the school's council has to approve that safety plan before it's sent to the board for approval. So there are things that can be done at the school site prior to it getting to the district level. That's not to say we can't go back and revisit issues, we would be happy to, but really, it's the school site council, and this is by law, that they have to be involved. School site council, when I was a principal, consists mostly of teachers, a member of classified parents and students, as well as the administration. So you have every contingent participating in the school's safety plan. I'd like to ask Mrs. Olson to, you know, she can't share a lot of, but maybe perhaps you can give an overview as to what you shared with staff regarding, you know, the situation at California and some of the contradictions we have to deal with.
Certainly. Understanding that it's a very difficult situation for everyone, and I do agree that our parent that spoke very clearly that we are guarded and we do have to protect confidentiality, not only of a child, but of a staff member and of, and a parent has privacy rights as well. So we did discuss with staff that that is, that that needs to be maintained, and I know that's not very comforting for anyone, but there, but we are held to that level of confidentiality. And then from that, what we take a look at is what do we do in our processes and procedures? What do we do, and this is in general, this is just a general statement, if you are concerned about someone on campus, what are the options that you do? And there are some. If you're comfortable, you can ask them what they're doing on campus, you can have a conversation. We even talked about how do you position yourself when you talk to somebody so that it doesn't come across as if you're being aggressive? Then we also, or if you're not comfortable, you get to a phone or you go to the office and you report that someone's there. Some of the other things that we've put in place is that our teachers who are out in the, on duty, they have a radio, so, which is a good practice, that they...
Not true, not true.
I'm speaking to California, this is something that we put in place, where they can go out and get a radio when they're on duty so that they have contact with, with the front office and the principal, and then set up some other things. So talking about what can we do, what is in our control, but at the same time, protecting the privacy of those involved.
And I do know, we had a, Dr. Phil, I'm sorry, DiAgostino, gave a presentation several, about a month ago on safety, and when there is a situation, there are things that kick in. There is an assessment made on if there was a perceived threat, there is an assessment made. And, do you want to just talk briefly about that?
No.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but you've had your turn to speak, and we're just, we're not going to have a yelling match. I'm trying to provide some more information, and I would expect you would just listen. And if you have further questions, you can email us or talk to us after.
Yeah, President Spell, Vice President Metoyer.
Dr. Phil.
It's, I know that it's been a difficult night for everyone.
It has, it has.
You know, we all, we all have been teachers, we all have been administrators, we're all in this together. I, I know Britt personally, I consider him a good friend, and if there's a notion that we're not taking this seriously, I can assure you that that is absolutely not the case. With respect to your specific comments about threat assessments, yes, we take every threat seriously, we take every risk seriously, and there's a protocol for it. As I think Ms. Olson hit the nail on the head about the balancing of privacy rights of students and families, but I can assure you that we, we take our lead very closely from law enforcement, we respond appropriately based on recommendations from law enforcement on all matters where we believe that a student or a parent or an individual might be a threat or a risk to any of our campuses or any of our staff members. It is a heightened issue for us, but it has always been a top priority. As I think Ms. Olson hit the nail on the head about the balancing of privacy rights of students and families. But I can assure you that we, we take our lead very closely from law enforcement. We respond appropriately based on recommendations from law enforcement on all matters where we believe that a student or a parent or an individual might be a threat or a risk to any of our campuses or, or any of our staff members. It is a, it is a heightened issue for us, but it has always been a top priority since, since, from going, since I was in a classroom, going on now 24 years and now in the position of Director of Student Services. It's something that we are concerned about every single day. We wake up in the morning and check our Nixol app, we check our news feeds, and we communicate regularly with principals. We welcome an ongoing conversation about this and, and we're prepared to try to respond wherever and however we can.
Thank you very much.
May I ask?
Yes.
Ms. Motteye. As a parent and a teacher, if you walk onto campus and something is different, I mean having a police presence when there never is one, I would like to think that the response of staff is, we're overprotecting, we're, we added this in because we weren't sure of our concern. You don't say this is business as usual when it's not business as usual. So that concerns me that perhaps we need to direct our, give a little more of an in-service to our, our sites so that the response from staff is in keeping with the actions of what's going on on campus. Because I, I, I understand how it feels, like I'm not stupid either. So if I walked on campus and all of a sudden there was films going on and I didn't know in advance that there was being a movie happening at school, I would expect someone to say, oh, we're, we're filming a movie, I can't go into details, but that's what's happening. Well, in this situation, it would have been, I feel, would have been nicer if they would have had that. And I, I don't think I've ever disagreed with you, but I am disagreeing with you now on the Safety Council idea because I thought that was a great idea. As a former school's council person when I was a parent, the main job of school site council is oversight. They are to review the document after it's already been created. And in the current climate, 20 years ago when my kids were there, I don't think I would have needed a Safety Council. It was a different world. But now maybe having a Safety Council at our sites, which I know, I'm sorry in advance principals for one more meeting that you would get to have, but having parent, teacher, and administrative input on the plans that we've been asking for is not a bad idea. So, that being said, I would like further investigation with our, both elementary and secondary principals, if that's something that we can set up or get going. Because, I'm sorry, but the world is afraid right now. And we have our, it's bad enough when there's, the whole world is afraid for us to do that. And the last thing I wanted to say was, and I understand why we do not have consistent plans because every site is different, access is different. And I'm glad somebody complained about the gates being pushed in and out because then they got to be fixed or, and it takes time.
I complained three years ago.
But, but I'm glad that that, it's, it's getting, it's moving forward. That being said, some consistency needs to be from site to site. We have too many traveling teachers, counselors, psychiatrists, psychologists, social workers. So some consistency should be there. The site plan should be at this point in the office for anybody else. Sadly, if you're a traveling teacher, you'd have a stack like this of the safety plans for all your schools. But we need to have some consistency. So I, I'm hoping that staff will move forward on those pieces.
Okay. Mrs. Flor.
Well, I appreciate all of, all of the, the concerns and, and the expressions of anger and frustration. I think from my point of view, and I've had multiple conversations with Mrs. Roberts, the issue about communications is, is quite strong. And I, I agree with her from the standpoint that receiving, and we had this conversation because I wasn't sure exactly where Suzanne, I thought Suzanne, I thought Suzanne sense was in your office. But she's John Drake's. But I think she's moved because we've got so many...
He moved.
So I think that we need to take a look at who's, who's, who's on first and who's getting the message. And if it's the principal that needs to be, because I agree that, you know, when we send out surveys, we want, it's only as good as what we get back. And if people are actually thinking that they're just throwing it away because they don't know who this person is, people are used to seeing from Annette or from Matthew Jennings, they see that because they, they know that that's coming from the communications people. But I think we have to, we have to really address that. On, on the issue of, of California's school, and I know that it, you know, it is a sensitive issue and it is, we have to protect the rights of this young student, we have to protect the rights of the teachers, the safety of, of all that's concerned. I would hope that in the near future that you would look at where we've done it before, we have had scheduled meetings or a meeting with, with, with whoever wants to come to have, so that they have an opportunity to, to address and, and meet and talk and have a conversation at the school for those parents and, and all, so that we can really get to it. I also agree with, with Member Motteye from the standpoint of Safety Councils. I'm not sure whether it needs to, you know, start, start at the, at the, at the lowest possible level first, or whether it's, it's convened with a representative from each of the schools, you have a, you have a parent advisory committee, whether it's, you get one, a teacher from each school, and you get a parent from each school and, and you work through that system. I'm not sure exactly, but I trust that, that should, that, that you take a look at it from, from best practices from other school districts, both large and small. This is a, a complex organization and I know that, I think Dennis Aschendorf said it best is that it's best if it's addressed collaboratively with all of the concerned parties and we have multiple stakeholders and they need to be, do it. But I, I do, I do think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that the facts get out because there is, you know, we heard a lot of conjecture tonight, a lot of innuendos and rumors in terms of even the drawing and what the drawing portrayed and what the drawing didn't portray. We haven't seen the drawing, but we have staff that has and they've done an assessment on it. And so I think that there just needs to do anything. In terms of the, in terms of the staffing in that classroom, can you, can you give us an idea of what the staffing is and what's happening?
Yes, I can. In that, in the classroom, the first few days there was rubal, there was subs, different subs.
Five weeks.
And then they did have, I, I don't know the exact timeline, but then they had somebody who was in there for a steady amount of time and then she chose to, to not continue. And so today we do have somebody else in there who is willing to stay there as long as we need her in the classroom. And she comes highly recommended from another school, she's also been in the class, she was there in one of the first few days of the absence.
Okay. Okay. We'll provide some stability. Okay. So are we ready to?
Well, I just want to, you know, go back and say, and, and, you know, I don't want it to leave the, leave you with the impression that, you know, that we're passive in any way because you all know me and you knew me as a high school principal and I said I never, my top two priorities were safety and performance. And I never, ever allow anyone to diminish those, those two top priorities. Those continue to be our two top priorities. I can tell you that during my absence, Mr. Lee Sung started, we're looking at safety throughout the district. And he's had several, we've had several district-wide meetings. There'll be another one on April 9th with all the principals for the very reason that we're here. I have to tell you that privacy is not going to be compromised. So we will be able to share process and procedure, but we won't be able to share names or what was the evidence was, that that's just not going to happen. But, you know, we can sit and talk about what do we do? Perhaps I could ask Dr. Jokum to talk about a situation with a child, how do we assess that, that child to make sure they're not a danger to themselves or to others?
Thank you. So I'll speak in broad terms and not about any specific student, but what happens when there's any concern brought forward is that there is a risk assessment conducted by, it's often either a counselor, a school psychologist, a school social worker who's been trained to determine if a student poses a risk to themself or to others. And based on that information, there is a, a ranking of, there's, there's no such thing as no risk, just because of the way the system works, but there's low risk, medium risk, and high risk. And each of those has a follow-up that you do depending on what level of risk is determined for any particular student. So if a student is found to have low or no risk, then it typically, there's nothing further that goes on other than some monitoring. There may be some ongoing conversations with parent just to let them know what's going on, what occurred, what the initial concern was and how we move forward. And I think that, that it's also appropriate that the, the staff that identified that concern and brought it forward, that risk forward is, the loop is completed so they know how it was resolved. And, but that's where it's supposed to be confidential information. So it isn't something that you send out to an entire school staff or an entire community to say, you know, we, we had a risk on, you know, little Johnny here and this is what became of it. But there is a process, we keep that documentation and we move forward. So if there was a concern that there's something that wasn't done in that respect at California or at any of our schools, I would like to hear that because then I would like to be able to follow up with our staff to say, why, because I think that's, some of the fear is that, you know, we know you did something, but we don't know what happened as a result of it. So I'm happy to bring that back forward and, and work with all of our school psychologists and our social workers to make sure they're closing that loop again. But we do, any, any type of risk or threat, we do an assessment and, and go from there.
And then Mr. Lee Sung was there on the day in question, so I'd like him to share his thoughts.
Yeah, I actually want to talk about something else that I want to remind our board that right after the Florida shooting, we did have a very lengthy presentation by Dr. DiAgostino. We took input from the board and you had asked us to take a look at additional safety protocols, measures, policies, whatever we need to do to make sure all of our students and staff is, is following proper safety procedures and what we can do to keep everybody safe. So I, I want to assure you that it has not been business as usual. We have taken agendas for other purposes and have focused it on safety. And we have done a lot of things to review policies, to listen to a lot of individuals. If I, if, I want to remind everybody that at the last board meeting, I stated that we have some immediate next steps that we want to move forward with. I want to meet with our two employee associations to review that, to get their input. We were hoping to have that meeting before tonight's meeting. Unfortunately, due to schedules that that was not able to occur. We do have that meeting set for Thursday and, and they're both confirmed for, for them to attend and participate in this meeting. And we also invited the entire executive boards to attend that meeting as well. We want to work very closely with all of our partners as we said that that, we, that's what we believe is a strength and we need to do more of that. I certainly have been taking a lot of notes with the comments and, and we need to work together to create our plan here at the district. What we have to be careful about is we've had, and it's completely understandable, everybody coming forward with great ideas, things that they've heard that have worked in other places or things that they believe are important. However, we have to look at, at all of those things, keep that open mind, look at all of those and be able to make some decisions, decisions together as a district and implement them appropriately. Obviously, we cannot do everything, but we need to choose and select the best things that are the right things and the most important things and the most impactful things to keep all of our, our folks safe. So, so we've been working very hard, I wanted to assure the board, and we do plan to come back and to report that back to the board as you had directed us after that, that meeting.
Okay, Ms. Motteye.
Perfect timing. Education notoriously is like having tugboat interests but trying to work with an aircraft carrier. So, and it's very frustrating for both parents, kids, and educators that we take so long to do stuff. Safety isn't something we should drag our feet with, which we all know and we understand the procedures while we... Sitting out there, I accuse the board of always being reactive and not being proactive. And it's frustrating when I am now sitting here and understanding why sometimes it doesn't happen ahead of time because there's just so many different things on our plates. But safety is a reactive kind of situation. And if we are making headway and we are making progress, then perhaps Mrs. Snell, we could add on our, on our agenda for the time being, maybe not forever, but safety update so that at every board meeting, we can find out what steps we've made, whether it was a giant leap to be able to accomplish something or just a teeny tiny little step, but so that the public is aware that we're not just waiting around for the next massive shooting to happen, hopefully not here. So I think that would, that might put people at rest if we have a safety update just for the time being. Because we are, no, I know we're working on it, but it's so frustrating how slow it has to go. So maybe we can look into that. What do we have to do to do that, Dr. Navarro?
Well, I would think that what you'd want is to get the information, once we have the information. It could be a couple of weeks before we move from one meeting to the next, before we even meet again with principals. So you don't want to have a meeting where it's, oh, we're still working on the next meeting. So I think what we would do is schedule as many information sessions as possible so that they're fruitful and meaningful and not repetitive.
But if I was a...
I was going to say, even if you just had a meeting, you could say we met with...
Right.
CSEA, we met with NMFT.
We made, we, we called, even if it was Jeff, we called CFE, CFEA, I'm just putting you guys together. We called our two union, our, our staff representatives and had, and scheduled a meeting for this date. I mean, members of the public, I, I wouldn't, I don't want to think that I have to wait six weeks and then I would think nothing's going on during those six weeks if we don't report back that something happened between last week and the next board meeting. So I, I, maybe we have to wait. Other board members, what do you think? Am I just...
Mrs. Flor. Okay. In years past and on some, on some board agendas, there's called informational items. And perhaps this is where, this is, this is an appropriate time to talk about adding an informational, it just says informational items and you have bullet, you have bullet points of, of, of information that's on the agenda that somebody can, you don't have to repeat it, you don't have to say anything, it's just an informational item. It could be, it could be meeting, it could be an update, it could be a status report on whatever. So that it's posted, it's available, and it's there for, for us. Now clearly, if we have a question about it, that's, that's the board's prerogative to expand upon it, but it, it's at the end of the meeting and it's, it's, it's just called informational items.
See, that's what I don't know because I'm new.
Instead of, because, so that's my suggestion is that perhaps that's the easiest way to do it is that if there's nothing, there's nothing, but it's, it's listed there.
I like that. Thank you.
Okay, we should, we're actually only supposed to have a brief, brief questions on the, on...
Sorry.
But it's such an important item, we, excuse us for breaking the rule here. But we need to move on to consent calendar.
Did the superintendent do his report already?
Yes.
He did? I don't think he's done this.
No, he did.
He's already, and then I kind of hijack.
Sorry about that. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion.
Excuse me, why don't you wait a minute? If you want, we'll wait, can we take a five minute break?
We'll take a five minute break.
Thank you.
We're on item number 17, the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered by the board to be routine...
All items listed under the consent calendar are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion. This includes consent calendars for business, education services, human resources, student support services, and the superintendent. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Public requests of items to be discussed and/or removed should be submitted in writing prior to the board's consideration of the consent calendar.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Madam President, I would like to, just because I think it's important, to remove, remove and discuss 17B5, the agreement with Newport Orthopedic Institute and the Newport Mesa Unified School District for Athletic Trainers. It's not that I'm opposed to it, I just think it's really important and I just would like it to be highlighted.
May I rephrase my motion then?
Please do.
Move approval of the consent calendar with the exception of... 17B5.
Second. Okay, so we have the consent calendar approved by, the motion by Ms. Franco and the second by Ms. Davenport, it's really hard for me to repeat all this. I'll get used to it, okay? Did you understand that?
Mrs. Black did it.
Oh, Mrs. Black did it.
Mrs. Black did the revised motion.
Oh, okay. So let's repeat that. Ms. Franco, the, we, the motion is as Ms. Franco said very clearly, and the second is by Mrs. Black. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it carries unanimously, and then we were going to go to public hearing, 18A. Ms. Olson.
Good evening again. This item is the formal first step in the 2018-19 negotiations process with CSEA. So this item is CSEA Chapter 18's initial proposal for public hearing, and after public hearing, we would ask that the board receive the proposal.
Okay, so I do the public hearing first. Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing. And having no cards, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to 18B. Ms. Olson.
Open it. And if you could, if you could receive the...
Do we move it? I move that we receive California School Employees Association Chapter Number 18 Initial Proposal for Reopener Negotiations to the Newport Mesa Unified School District for Negotiations Commencing 2018-2019. Second.
Okay, moved by, by Ms. Matoye and seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. Now, on to 19A.
So this is Newport Mesa Unified School District's sunshining document for our initial proposal to enter into the 2018-19 negotiation process with CSEA. And again, after the public hearing, we ask that you approve our proposal.
Okay, so I'm opening the public hearing. Still no one, so I am closing the public hearing.
Move approval of the Newport Mesa Unified School District Initial Proposal for Reopener Negotiations to the California School Employees Association Chapter 18 for Negotiations Commencing 2018-19.
Second. Okay, so it is moved by Mrs. Flor and seconded by Mrs. Franco. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Let negotiations begin.
Okay, on to the discussion action calendar, 20A.
Move adoption of Resolution 3103-18 in support of Autism Awareness Month, April 2018.
Second. Any discussion, or do you have any comments? Dr. Yakim? Dr. Yakim?
You have comments?
Do you have any comments?
Yes, absolutely. I was, I was, it's, I wanted to thank NMFT because they all wore blue tonight, and when we celebrate Autism Awareness Month on Tuesdays, we wear blue. So some of us started early, but starting next week, April, on Tuesdays, we wear blue just to, you know, bring attention to the students that we have who have autism. But I just wanted to give you just a, an interesting statistic. In 2002, as of December, the district had 120 students diagnosed with autism. As of December of 2017, we had 499 students.
Would you repeat those numbers?
Sure. In 2002, it was 120. In 2017, this is as of December 1st, 499. So it is, is a true statistic that it's about one out of every 68 or less students or children in the United States, so.
Wow. We do an excellent job.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to adopt Resolution 31-03-18 in support of Autism Awareness Month for April 2018, moved by Mrs. Flor and seconded by Mrs. Black. All in favor?
No, it's roll call.
Oh, it's roll call.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Ms. Flor?
Yes.
Mr. Davenport?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Franco?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Okay, and now the next thing is...
17B5.
17B5.
Yeah. And the reason I'm asking for Dr. Bauermeister to respond is, I think this is really an important first step in our assessment of our needs.
So let me give you a little background for, because Dr. Bauermeister and I locked horns over this. And it really had to do with the fact that I have a concern that our students, if they're injured, have a medical assessment by a qualified medical doctor, you know, but, you know, and we rely heavily on trainers. Trainers are not fully medically licensed doctors. They are good at helping out with taping and helping kids get over injuries, they're good at triaging and calling 911, but to expect them to make a medical diagnosis is a little bit outside of their field. So, you know, Kirk knew I was going to say that to him when he came to me with this, and I think Sean knew that too. But I really think this is a good model, and Mr. Lee Sung reminded me that when we were in Alhambra, with both principals in Alhambra, we have a very similar program to what this institute's going to offer us. So I think the value in this is that these trainers will all be certified, these trainers will, we will have a guaranteed trainer whenever we need them, and they can communicate immediately with a physician and get a diagnosis over their cell phone with the physician who can, you know, if you FaceTime it or whatever you do, you know, look at the kid and say, and ask about, ask the important questions that a doctor knows to answer, and then, you know, we can, we can address the kid's injury. So I really like this because of the resources it brings that we haven't had before. It's also, and I know it sounds expensive, but if you were to get a doctor to provide these kinds of services, it'd be significantly more expensive for the district to hire a doctor and have them on, available to all four sites, that'd be pretty hard and pretty crazy. But if this works out well, this is something that we would look at spreading throughout the district and providing the same level of support at all the schools. So I'm going to let Kirk now give you the little details about this project, because they're very flexible. If you like your current trainer, they'll even hire them and train them again, or do what they do at their, at their practice.
Dr. Navarro explained it very well, but there's a lot of work that went in this with Mr. Lee Sung. Jeff Trader did the contract work. Sean Bolton kind of laid the groundwork for it. But as Dr. Navarro said, the great thing about this is, we'll be piloting the rest of this year and next year with Newport Harbor, so at the end of that time, we'll be able to look at and assess how the program worked and whether we want to use it with the other schools. Newport Orthopedic has already said that they can provide trainers for the other schools if they want them. If the train, if the school that has their trainer likes their trainer and they want to keep, keep moving forward with them, they certainly have the right to do that. Also, Newport Orthopedic said that if, they would hire those people as well, if the schools already had a trainer that they were working with, that they liked, that they would hire them in as their trainer as well. So that's a possibility of this model as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Matoye.
I have a question. If, if the school has a trainer that they love and adore and like them, and they are working at that school in some other capacity in addition to working as a trainer, would the Newport Orthopedic situation, and this is after we've, after you've tried it all out, Dr. Bolton, if Newport, would they be hiring them just in that, for that trainer capacity, so that little piece would be taken care of, but the rest of everything else stays the same? And so, we, in fact, we haven't even explored all the possible options that we could get into, so we're going to play with it for a year and nobody has to do anything else this year. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So Newport Orthopedic is hiring them to be an athletic trainer onsite from 40 hours a week, so it's approximately, you know, 1:30 to 8:00 or 9:00, you know, during basketball season and soccer season, there's games four nights a week. So if that person, I think we're talking about at one of our high schools, is working at the school, they do the ROP Sports Medicine, they would have the ability then to do that 40 hours a week. If they didn't want to do that 40 hours a week and they only wanted to do 20, Newport Orthopedic would provide us another trainer to do that other 20 hours. So they could keep their trainer to do their 20, and then Newport Orthopedic could backfill the other 20 hours. That's kind of the beauty of this, is they're willing to get people for us.
Flexibility.
There's flexibility in the...
They're very flexible, and, you know, Sean has talked to them about different scenarios, and they've been very flexible on everything we want to do. Again, one week it may be 35 hours, but the next week it may be 45 hours or 50 hours, so we have that flexibility to be able to cover. We will have more coverage than we've ever had before with our trainers using these hours. We'll be able to cover practices, which in the past usually didn't get covered, so.
Site principals will have their, will be able to design what works the best for their sites. For the safety of the students as well as their...
Site principal, or the AP in charge of athletics, whoever's, I imagine somebody will be looking at those hours. And again, that's what we'll look at at the back end of the contract when we're done with the pilot program. Are those sufficient hours? Do we want more hours? Do we want less hours? Those are things that we can look at.
Okay, Mrs. Flor.
Yeah, but I want to be a little bit clear on this in terms of hiring our individuals. As long as they meet the orthopedic institute's criteria of being, I mean, these are individuals that are certified. They are not just parents, they haven't just had a first aid class, they are actual certified personal trainers. So I think it's really, really needs to be incumbent upon us to say, yeah, you know, an employee of ours could in fact apply for this position, but it will be up to orthopedic services, the institute, to ensure that, that they make, they meet the basic criterias and are certified.
Jeff takes care of all those things in all of his contracts. And it says that they're certified by the National or California Athletic Trainers Association, it says so in the contract.
Okay. I also, so, two questions. One is, as I mentioned on the phone when I was getting some additional information on this, I think it would be, this is a fabulous opportunity for our kids to mentor. We do have sports medicine through the ROP, so it would be an opportunity for them to be able to shadow and work with professionals, if this is the field that they're interested in. And two, this is one of those things that, you know, it's really, it's really great, but I want to make sure that we have the evaluation button down. I mean, I want a clear, cut, check, so it's sort of subjective. I just don't want, well, yeah, they're great. I don't want that. I mean, that's not an evaluation. Oh, this person's really nice, he's really good. No, you know, I want, I want data, I want it, really good guidelines, I'm sure that there's a, sort of a professional guidelines for this and make sure, so that at the end, because we would be considering it for a possibility for, for all our schools, we're talking approximately, if this one's 69, this is, it's $51,000 normally, so we're talking over...
$200,000.
$200,000, right?
$200,000.
$240,000.
Athletics is expensive.
Yeah, exactly. And again, the question is, as I, this also includes cheer, because it's a sport.
Cheer is a sport.
It is a sport. And then, you know, I'm really concerned about the concussions and who releases them? Will the athletic trainer follow them in terms of, of ensuring that, or is it, or they, they're referred to a doctor who will do the release and do the follow-up to make sure that they're not? Because concussions last longer than just a day, and can, you know, you're cleared to play, but you still have some repercussions in the classroom, and we don't know that those are.
So actually, I think Dr. Bolton can probably speak to that pretty well. We have a concussion protocol that we use at all of our schools right now. There's a return to play protocol and a return to learn protocol. And actually, we worked with Mary Graska about the return to learn protocol, and we'll be using it as our, as, as, ensign next year as well as a pilot, that program. But your specific question is, once the trainer refers them to a doctor, they have to be cleared by a doctor before they can get on the field. But also, our trainer will put them through drills and things as well, and even though they have a doctor's clearance, if the trainer doesn't feel that they're, it's appropriate for them to go back on the field, they can withhold that student from playing as well. And we've been very clear with all of our coaches, athletic directors, that the trainer's word is the final word. If they say a student is not prepared to play or ready to play, they don't play.
So you're, are you requiring signatories so that we make sure that it's just not word of mouth, that there's actual signs so that it can't be overridden?
Yeah, there are, there's a whole, there's forms, I can send them all, I can send you the forms, the return to learn and return to play forms that we have.
As long as they're in policy and AR, so I just want to make sure of that.
Mrs. Yelsey.
I just want to ask, this is just from Newport Harbor.
Oops, microphone.
For the rest of this year and next year, it's a pilot with Newport Harbor High School.
The reason I ask is, I know at Corona del Mar, and I think I may have mentioned this to you, they really, really like their trainer right now. I mean, he's helped them, and the trainer has helped teams in so many ways in terms of, especially sports like volleyball, where they need to be taped correctly to be able to play, and these kids are saying, "I never would be able to play if I didn't have this trainer here." But they may not have enough hours right now under their current program to, I mean, we may lose some trainers like that because they want more hours. So if this is successful, could they come in under the Newport Orthopedic and be guaranteed a certain number of hours?
40 hours per week, yeah.
Okay, so that's, okay.
But after next year, or could they do it this year?
This pilot is just for Newport Harbor for the rest of this year and next year.
Okay. So they'd have to wait?
To the end of next year.
Or they'd have to, because these are voluntary, who's funding this?
We are.
Because it looks like, well, it said voluntary at one point, donations.
Just to make it official, President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, executive cabinet, and distinguished guests. This does, this actually falls under student safety as well, and this is something that we, we have an athletic foundation that's committed resources towards this, and there's some other resources that we're drawing from to make it work. But just to get back to the concussion protocol very quickly, it's a doctor's note that releases the student back to play, and then there's a whole return to learn protocol, and that's the evolution of the return to learn as it pertains to concussions, and how much of an academic load a student can sustain, given the concussion, the grade of the concussion, and the time lapse from the time of injury to, so there's all these intricacies, and it's a continual evolution that I feel like a certified trainer can really help us with, with a tie-in to a medical team. But as far as playing, it's a doctor that releases that student back onto the playing field.
Okay, and these, these trainers are not involved with the rehab, right, of the rehabilitation? Or is that a different type of group? There's conditioning, yeah.
That's physical therapy, and that would be through the doctor's office.
Got it. Did you say who's paying for it?
That was your question, right?
Yeah, he did say.
Did he? And I did...
Yes, it's their foundation.
Foundation.
There's an athletic foundation, there's also some other resources that we're drawing from to pay for it.
Okay.
But...
Eventually. I don't know where my mind went, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Move approval of the agreement with Newport Orthopedic Institute and the Newport Mesa Unified School District for Athletic Trainer Support Services for 2017 through 2019 school years. Second.
Okay, so it was moved by Ms. Flor and seconded by Ms. Matoye. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to the board member reports, and we'll do the committee reports separately. So I'm starting with Karen, with Mrs. Yelsey.
Okay, I'll try to be quick. While Dr. Bolton is still here, I'll just mention, well, no, I just want to mention that I was at their, the Newport Harbor Mentor Luncheon last week, I believe it was. Mrs. Snell was there with me. And once again, it's a fabulous, fabulous program. And for the kids to get up and say their mentor, not only did they learn about whatever field they're working in, but their mentor made them, it was someone to always connect with, whatever kind of mood they were in, if they were down, if they were up, they did all kinds of great things outside of what they were being mentored on. And it's just another way for our kids to connect with someone out there. We always want, I think our goal is to have every child connect with someone on campus or related to campus. And this is a great program, and people have said, oh, we should do it at every school. That would be nice, but it's really so innately built into Newport Harbor, and it takes a lot of work to get it done, and we understand that, and you should be applauded for what a great job you do.
Before you go, I need to chime in. The reason it's so successful, it was parent-initiated, you know, with Dr. Masferro that started it, but the reason it's taken on is because the staff came in and became, you know, the...
Well, Debbie Brosnik, I think, runs it and does a fabulous job.
They just, you know, they really took it upon themselves, and the parents all rallied, but it really is because you have a staff there that, you know, that really shows, sees the benefits of it. So that, I think, but I, because I was on that committee and I ran the first two, and it was hard as a parent to try to reach out to everyone where the students were, you know, just so grateful for that experience.
And you still have a lot of parent volunteers there, so that's great. Thanks. And then quickly, many of us were at the Corona Del Mar Learning Resource Center opening. It looks fabulous. The kids are all really excited now, and I'm, I can't thank the foundation over there enough for what they've done, for their vision and their fortitude in sticking with this because it took over five years for them to get it done. Things at Corona Del Mar don't come quick.
Nothing comes quick. Nothing jumps quick. Well, then the first one to get it, sorry, I'm sorry to keep chiming in on here.
Pollerino, I know we're all having little chats at Pollerino with Amy Nate.
And College Park.
Yes, and, yes, but I've only, I was just going to say my, what I've done.
You went to one already in the College Park. You went to one already?
I, yes.
Oh, cool. Shut up.
Anyhow, I was at College Park talking to Dr. Nagy. It is really amazing what she's doing over there with the data to really know every student and what they're doing and what level they're at. And I really enjoyed, we got to walk around a little bit afterward to their Level Library, where they have, I mean, it's so neatly done. This is a library with level-grade readers that the kids can go around to and pick out whatever they want, their great books. It's just amazing program going on over there. I was at Newport Coast Elementary for their STEAM night last week, and this was totally voluntary, but I think there were 18 teachers who participated in this and had different classrooms opening, open with projects going on, as well as the city of Newport Beach had a lot of their programs, they have after-school programs, they were involved. The best one I was at was the Dissection of Squid, and they had all these little squid, but then they had this one huge squid that the kids were working on. It was pretty amazing, but it was lots of fun, and they had dinner there, I mean, it was packed with the Newport Coast community.
Was it Kalmarie, the dinner?
Especially all those little hands, I think.
I saw the Lincoln play last week. They did Aladdin, and even though we all think Claire Radfield retired, she's still around. She's not quite, she's not the director, she's Director Emeritus, and she does the script adaptation, and you can tell the lines she puts in. They get lots of laughs. It was very good. And I didn't see other people, but I know you were there at the Spirit Run?
Yes.
Last week. I walked up there with my grandson in the stroller, and it was, it was great. So once again, Diane Derudy, I know we'll have her at some meeting in the future, but she does an outstanding job. I know you ran in it, right? She does an outstanding job of really bringing the community together in a bigger way than it ever has when it was run just within the school district. And a lot of money goes to all the schools and the kids, so.
Yeah, it was fun.
Want to turn it?
Yes.
So I did a four-hour round trip to pick up my grandchildren, sons. We were Team Reed and Pierce to be at the Spirit Run, and we got up early, and unfortunately, our six-year-old was sick, and so we thought we could just leave him in the car.
With the windows closed.
We all voted. And I just didn't think it would be appropriate to be one of my grandkids to be locked in the car. No, I'm kidding. So we were really disappointed that we couldn't do that, but anyway, I attended the, at Newport Harbor, was our host for our Student Advisory Committee, and it was kind of a crazy, you know, morning. Everybody was trying to figure out where the Heritage Run was, but, I mean, Heritage Run, see, I've served on that too many years, Heritage Hall was, and that was, you know, really good conversation. And so now, I think we've inspired some of our students to do it at the other schools because they were so impressed, you know, the history and whatnot. And then Dr. D did an amazing presentation with the students regarding where we're at. Our students really have a very heartfelt concern about some of their friends and, you know, family situation hearsay, teachers, you know, that are concerned. And we heard mostly from our athletic, not athletic, we are punchy, it's only nine o'clock and I just, with our, you know, advisors that are there with our students. And they are really fearful and concerned, and we did have a very candid conversation, but Dr. D was fabulous, as always, with our students. And so they're working on interviews with Annette Franco on why they enjoy this, and then they're going to come back at our next meeting and we'll have some feedback, they have some homework, and so we'll, you know, hopefully get back to you then.
That's Franco.
Mrs. Matoye and I attended the Newport Harbor High School, Corona Del Mar High School Sailing Banquet last Friday. As always, it was packed down at Bahia. What I don't know yet, because they haven't quite finished the season, is whether either team has qualified for Nationals, whether it be Mallory or Baker. We should learn that within the next, I would guess, within the next two to three weeks. Hopefully, they have both qualified. We'll see. But it was a wonderful banquet. Corona Del Mar has seven seniors graduating from the program. Newport Harbor has four.
Okay.
No report this evening?
I was one of those lovely, fortunate people that got the flu. So I didn't, wasn't able to do that, but I want to thank Suzanne Gauntland for including me in the, I guess it's the Zone Pack Meeting?
Oh, I love Zone Pack.
That is held at, monthly at Corona Del Mar. I find it fascinating because I remember years and years ago, we had very active Zone Packs at every single one of our zone, at every single zone in the high school zone. And I'm not sure they're as active as the Corona Del Mar one that continues to really engage. There's always several parent, you know, parents from each of the elementary schools as well as foundation. And it was a good meeting because Dr. DiAgostino, or Dr. Phil, as he's now known, was there to present on the safety issues, and there are many of the issues that were brought up here tonight about communicating and people wanting to know the incidences. I mean, Dr. DiAgostino did a great job in explaining that it's just not appropriate to send and tell everybody everything and every incident. It's just, it's, we have to be really cautious about that. But again, he also reiterated the fact of the protocols, Angela Castellanos was there, and then of course, starting to talk about the safety and walking our school sites to start looking at that. I do want to commend, because as a grandparent of a student at Corona Del Mar, I've received no less than at least two calls from the school indicating the safety plans and what's the new protocols in terms of closing and opening the gates and everything, so I'm really pleased about that. And then I also had an opportunity to tour with Ellie Campbell, the president of the foundation, the unbelievable learning LRC space. It is really going to be magnificent. I think the thing that really has impressed me was the ability of students to reserve actual study spaces that have, you know, full-on hookups, you know, it's almost like mini offices and little mini conference rooms that the kids can participate in, and it'll be really fabulous, just fabulous. And so, looking forward to seeing that throughout our district as a model, so.
Okay. Ms. Matoye?
I was able to attend, the city of Costa Mesa has a liaison meeting that we meet four times a year with the sanitation department, the city, and the water district, and us, and it's always very informative, and each issue that an entity has is discussed there, and it's a fascinating, it's a wonderful lesson in collaborative entities, public entities that will work together for the common good of everyone, and everyone listens to everyone. So that was, that was enjoyable. And I was able to attend last night the All District String Orchestra Event, and it has evolved into such a beautiful evening, short and quick, and it was held at Newport Harbor High School, and our program has evolved into something beautiful. They do it in the right order, they start with elementary, so you go, oh, good, and nobody did hot cross buns, and that was really appreciated because that's usually what we get to hear because it's all on open strings and real easy to play. But the other thing that was fascinating to watch was that our program has evolved in elementary to include violas that are really violas and not re-strung violins. We had cellos, and we have bass. I didn't know they made half bass and three-quarter basses so that students can actually hold them when they're that young, but it was fabulous. And by the time they got to the high, they did the middle school, and they did the high school. Each one was directed by a different music teacher, all the music teachers were in attendance, and the high school was directed by Professor Yi from Vanguard University, who is the professor of music teacher teaching. She teaches our music teachers to become music teachers. And when they played a classical piece, of which I didn't know the name of, but it was recognizable, and it was like, oh, it was wonderful. So I'm looking forward, I know we're going to be having the all choral group and then probably a band group. There's, it's, we're heading into that time of the year where all that hard work pays off, so that was just delightful. And I was able to attend, the first time I went to Angel Stadium to watch the Estancia and Costa Mesa game, while I didn't appreciate the outcome as much as the Estancia parents did. What I did appreciate was hearing the guards tell us as we entered into the stadium, you know, your school is the first people, the first two teams to play on the newly renovated Angel Stadium with our new Jumbotron things that maybe you could get for your schools. And when I sat there and saw them, and they are the size of, if you're old enough to remember, an outdoor movie theater, I said, don't even talk to our parents about this scoreboard. We don't need anything that big anywhere, no matter what.
Not a district standard.
It's not the district standard. I said, we just got new scoreboards and we love them, but thank you. It was so fun to watch the kids play. It was just really, it was neat and to hear them announce.
Experience for them.
It was, it was really, it was an, and I don't know how many of them watched the game, there were cheers and the cheerleading. Many of them spent their time in line buying hot dogs, pretzels, soda pop because they were there, but it was, both schools sent busloads of kids, it was really great. I really enjoyed it. I think I've spoken enough tonight.
Ms. Matoye and I attended the State of the City Costa Mesa Presentation, which was very good. Mayor Guinness and Tom Hatch, the city manager, gave a presentation on all the wonderful things going on in Costa Mesa, and there were a lot of business people there, and it was, it was very enjoyable, I enjoyed it. I also, I went to the Estancia High School PTA Meeting last night, and Vlad, I can't remember.
Anderson.
Anderson gave a presentation to the PTA on internet safety, which I guess you cannot give that presentation too much.
Too much.
But I think it was a little bit over the heads of most of the parents, you know, I...
Not the kids.
Not the kids. There were a few students there, but this was actually supposed to be more directed. But his main message got through, which is you have to monitor your kids. If you can figure out how to do it, you have to monitor. That would be a great class for a parent education class, you know, cell phones for dummies, 101, you know, how to figure out...
Kids can teach us.
Yeah. Well, Vlad didn't say that. He said that some of the, he's been doing this presentation for years, and some of the info he would get for the next year were from the students on what was hot and what was going on. The other thing is, SOI celebrates its 25th year this year, and all it does for students and youth, and unfortunately, this year I can't go to their fiesta. I would love for someone to be able to attend, but I, and I don't know whether, I'd like to honor them in some way. I don't know whether we try to bring them here, or somebody goes to this thing with a certificate, or, so I need some direction on...
Kirk's going.
Are you going? Oh, great. I think they would love to have somebody present them something there, and, you know, so how do we do that?
We do appreciate them.
Okay, we'll create something for them. Wonderful. They do so much for our students, and the program has expanded, and I think they'll be happy to hear that. So now we'll go on to committee reports. You already gave your committee report. You went out of order and gave your committee report.
Which committee? The Liaison Committee? Oh, is that a committee report?
Yes.
That's all right. I've just been a rebel tonight, what can I say?
Okay, do you have any other committee reports?
No, there were no, the chamber, we had a, the chamber committee.
Nobody was there, there's really no report?
There was no report. That's why, that was the only other committee we had. Yeah, a couple, a couple of things. First, I'll report on the ROP, which was great. Look at all these wonderful students that talked. But I want to give a little bit of an update on Newport Harbor's culinary program. This is hot off the press. Newport Harbor's competed at this, at an event called FCC LA Region. There was nine competitions on February 24th. Newport Harbor had 28 competitors, and all of them advanced to the state competition, including the competitors from Ashley Kingsbury, she's our new baking and pastry teacher at Newport Harbor, as well as Julie Patterson, she's a culinary teacher, and two students, Milo Rauda and Brock Stone coached, took first place. And then Sarah Palin, who's our district teacher, but also works, we pay, we contract with Sarah, she has taught some sections of the ROP, so outstanding job by those individuals in that. We continue to have conversations with the steering committee as well as the other board members in regards to the program and the program delivery. And then I had the opportunity to go up and lobby and have conversations with our legislators regarding the ROP, specifically about AB 1743 and also the governor's proposal. And I just want to give you a couple of information items regarding the current environment for legislative... items regarding the current environment for legislators. With the exception of, few exceptions in the Senate, nearly all current legislators arrived in Sacramento after the Great Depression, after the passage of LCFF, and thus after the loss of targeted, ongoing CTE funding. They have no clue. Many legislators think that the Career Pathways Trust Grants and the CTE Incentive Grants have allowed CTE programs to be maintained and will allow them to continue in the future. Nothing is further than the truth. And most legislators know that the Career Pathways have ended and heard about CTE, or the CTE Incentive Grants are coming, but they don't know, they're really not sure. And part of the reason we went up there is because in the governor's budget, he has put in $200 million to go for strong workforce. The problem with the governor's budget is that it's for K-12 Career and Technical Education, but it's going to go to the community colleges.
Oh.
There's the rub. So it's supposed to, and the concept is that they're going to administer it because we don't know how. And so that's part of the issue. Whereas it's not going to do what it says. They believe that it's, you know, that we don't know how to do what we're doing. And yet, we have over 400 programs. And he thinks that it's, we're just having a real hard time with him. However, there's good news on, on the front, and that's AB-1743. It's being sponsored by O'Donnell, Burke, Rudy Chavez, Cunningham, McCarthy, Kirk Silver, and Thurmond. As well as, we just, when we were up there, we had conversations with Pat Bates, and she has agreed to sign on as well. So she's a signatory. We're working with our other local legislators, and we're hoping that they will also sign on. They seem to be very supportive of it. And what 1743 does is allow students to gain college and career readiness through the access of high-quality career and technical education. And it's the first time that it's providing $500 million. It will be incentive, it will be, it will be a competitive grant, but it'll be $500 million per year for CTE, for the California Incentive Grant. And it's ongoing. There will be a matching grant. It'll probably specify a one-to-one matching grant, but it will allow, it'll allow it to continue. We believe that it's bipartisan, and we're hoping that that'll pass. And so, especially when, in the fact that all of us have to be providing because it's under LCFF. And so we have to, we have to pass this. So I would hope that we could get a resolution and put a resolution on so that we can send a, at least a letter from our district in support of, of AB-1743 and hope for that is. So that's my report.
Okay, anybody else have a, okay, so we'll go on to Superintendent.
Just real quickly, I would like to thank Pam Saunders for getting Lynn Aldridge in touch with me. We'll be visiting them on May 2 at 6:00 PM. And we'll be having an exchange of ideas about safety.
Great.
That's what we set that up. So appreciate that very much. I also like to let you know that I believe that, that we'll be coming back to you. I've asked Mr. Holcomb, look into this, about the theater again. And so you can get an update as to where we are in that process, okay? And maybe give you some feedback as to how to, how we'll move forward.
Great.
So that, two things happen. You make final decision independently as a board, and yet there's enough information coming to you so you know what's taking place, okay?
Great.
Terrific. Well, I'd like to share with you tonight, I believe it was passed out to the Personnel Commission, 1617 Annual Report. The report, it's exciting to see that the work that is done with Kristin Clark and her team underneath, under the Personnel Commission, which does truly promote promotions and the training for, for employees. So I'll just highlight a couple facts for you. If you take a look at the inside page there, there's applications received. So for the 1617 school year, 7,854 applicants that were screened. Eligibility list is another, high number, 76, meaning that once it's depleted, then you create another one. New employees in permanent positions, 141. And then I will end on, over on the next page, at the very top, left-hand side, for promotions, 39 promotions within the district. So just wanted to celebrate that with you.
Excellent.
With Kristin and her team as well.
I love this report.
I do, too.
It's really good.
No report.
No report.
Traitor.
Thank you.
Oh, man.
No news on the money part.
Yay, good.
As long as I have the microphone here, I wanted to say, you know, thank you. You're talking about some of the work that Phil did. But he let me know this evening that the three teachers who presented for Project Lead the Way, he hired those teachers when he was at Costa Mesa. So he was sitting back there a little bit like a proud daddy, like, yeah, I hired them, you know.
My granddaughter had one of them her first year.
So I said.
Good job, good job.
I did confirm that with them. So, yeah, they, they remembered that as well. So.
But you hired them for something different, though.
Probably, yeah. So, but they can, you know, he continues to do that good work. Mrs. Roberts briefly mentioned an upcoming parent training that we have, which is called Healthy Communication and Limit Setting. And it's by Dr. Kay Ostensen and Joy Cleary, who is a clinical social worker and a former employee of the district. And so we are having two different presentations. We seem to think that gets the most parents coming out. So on April 12, we're having it from 9:00 to 11:00 here at the district office. And then April 26, we're going to have it from 6:00 to 8:00 PM here. And in the evening session, we will provide childcare. So the word has gone out. Obviously, parents have been receiving it. So we, we think it's a timely topic, and we're looking for good attendance.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
I have, I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, there's, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Flohr.
LCFF closed the handover, the study. Can we have an update on how many were received? Or is there plans, did we receive enough to make it valid? Or do we need to open it up again?
The study?
The survey, the LCFF survey. It was closed. I guess it's closed now?
Okay, so, so the L, I'm sorry, the LCAP survey.
The LCAP, yeah.
LCAP survey was open for three weeks. It has now closed.
Right.
We did just recently received the final tallies. I, I don't have the numbers stuck in my head. But it looks like, you know, we did receive a pretty good involvement from students, parents, and staff.
Oh, good.
Okay. It's, it's never as much as we would like, but certainly isn't short of an effort.
I guess I would like to have some, you know, some, just some, just some basic information. Did every school have some representation?
Absolutely.
You know?
Yeah.
Or were there some missing schools?
Yeah, no, every school was represented. And we certainly was, we were tracking the progress and the participation rate at all the schools and sending out reminders to all of them. And there was representation in terms of students, parents, and staff at every school site.
Okay, Mrs. Matoye.
I just want to thank Dr. DiAgostino. I noticed that during the parent comments, he got up and he approached two parents and offered social service. He gave them his card. And if you don't have immediate customer service like that very often, and I want to thank you for that. It was noticed.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Okay, so Martha Flohr made the motion to adjourn, and it was seconded by Mrs. Matoye. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good night.